Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, October 12th, 2022. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on WHCA. And as we start all meetings, if you would please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay, welcome, everyone. So the agenda is not very long, but I do know there are several items on here that are going to take a little bit of time. So I will try and help us move along as best we can, but making sure we're not skipping over anything important. We are starting with public comment, and I think there's at least maybe someone here that wants to share. Come on up. If you could just give us your name and your street. And then what we try to ask is folks to try and limit comments to around a few minutes. We take in, and then we don't typically respond, but we will certainly respond to any concerns you bring up. So go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Julie Swan. I live at 286 Birch Park Drive in Hanson. I have two children in the district. One is in fourth grade and one is in third. And we've had an amazing five years so far in the Indian Head school building. The teachers, the staff love their kids, and that's all I can ask for. So we've had some challenges with, you know, different things. They've always been addressed really well, very quickly. So the reason why I'm here today is because of the buses. And we've had some combinations of buses at Indian Head. My understanding is that before the school year started, we had, like last year, we had 12 buses, and now we have four. I mean, sorry, we lost four, so now we have eight. We have a larger area to get through for our kids to get to one elementary school. So the bus ride is longer. And then my kids are sucked into three kids in a seat because that's where they're assigned. Every day, since August 31st, I've been getting tears, frustration. It's so loud. The kids are not calming down. The bus driver has to pull over, screaming at them. And it's not her fault. She's supposed to drive the kids to and from school. That's her job. And we want to support her. She's new to us this year, and she's been fine, like overall. But it's unnerving to have a child come to you. And just both of my children are really struggling right now. And I gave it some time, like, dude, just move on, get over it. It's the bus. It's, you know, 30, 40 minutes of your day. Let's move forward. And the comments that I still am getting are, I can't live my life like this, Mom. Please do something. And with that, I have to speak up. I have a wonderful support system in my neighborhood. Marion Bray has two children at Indian Head School, one in third and one in first. I also have some other comments from other parents in my neighborhood. The reason why is it's important. It's safety, and we have to make sure our kids are getting to and from their wonderful school the best way they can. The concerns that I'm sharing today have been since the beginning of school. But mainly, I just wanted to share that we did reach out to the school, Mrs. Costa and Dr. Jocelyn, on September 14th about the fact that there was overcrowding, that the reports are it's unsafe, that there's screaming, no one's calming down, and they're just overwhelmed. The response I received back was that the buses are at capacity due to the loss of four buses this year, so they are crowded. Drivers do control seating at their discretion in order to maintain safety, which is 100% their job. And then Mrs. Costa said, I intervene when safety concern is present and remind students of expectations. Absolutely. So I think my concern with the comments, though, was that if my kids are not doing what they're supposed to do on the bus, or other kids aren't doing what they're supposed to, where is their discipline? What is happening with these kids that aren't able to control their actions on the bus? Or is it just the fact that they're all squished together and they can't control their bodies because they're little humans? I don't know. But I just wanted to make sure that you were aware. The response back was that, you know, we are trying to have a safe environment, but so far, nothing has changed. And this has been September 14th. There was somebody who went on the bus. Again, this is a report from a nine-year-old, so take it with what he is saying to me, that there was a person who went on the bus that was telling them what to do and trying to maintain order one day. They didn't know who she was. They didn't understand why she was on the bus, and they just said that she was mean and yelling at them. In talking to Superintendent Sizinak this morning, it sounds like she was from the transportation department trying to see what was going on on the buses, which is great. My kids interpreted as some weird lady. They didn't know. And I'm sure she's a wonderful human. I just didn't know who she was, and the report was not really helpful from my nine-year-old. So I think the concern is, what do we need to do to support these kids? I only have, you know, two, but there's, you know, a lot of other students on this bus and on other buses in Hanson especially. So the other things I just wanted to share, nothing really has been changing. My kids are still upset every day after they get off the bus. They only drive home from school. They go to the Y program in the morning. But one of the comments just on the end of September was, my son reported to me that the bus driver said, I'm going to quit, and your parents will have to start driving you to school. We need to do something for these kids, okay? It's not fair to this bus driver to not be able to drive these kids to and from school. I reached out on September 4th to some people in central office, the transportation office. I hadn't heard anything for two days, so I did reach out to the entire school committee two days later. I did hear from everybody. I really appreciate your support. I'm doing this on behalf of our kids. And if there's more information that I could share, I did reach out to my neighbors. One person said that the kids are loud, obnoxious, and no one's being held accountable. That was not my words. Loud buses, drivers are mean, drivers are stressed. Having drivers, being able to focus on driving and not discipling students is my biggest concern. Loud and wild behaviors on the bus. The bus is longer than last year. And then from a different parent, Dr. Jocelyn shared that Mrs. Costa would meet with Bus Six, which is my kid's bus, regarding the Norris level. The state reimburses school districts up to 90% of their transportation costs. A condition for state reimbursement is a requirement for school districts to run buses at a minimum of 70% capacity. To meet that 70% usage threshold, there was a need to combine routes, leading to fewer buses per route and more students on buses. We get that. I think we get that. We just want to make sure that they're safely getting to and from school. So.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Of course. And thank you for coming. I think anyone that's willing to come up here and share our public comments, we appreciate it. So thank you.
Rosemary Conley, 405 Franklin Street. I'm also on Finance Committee, in which you presented the new bus alternatives, and there was no mention of a reduction of buses in that. And we were told that all buses were already to capacity. So I would like a breakdown of where the children, the amount of children on each bus from last year to this year. I'm making this as a public records request. Thank you.
Anyone else? So I know you want to talk about transportation a little bit tonight. Do you want to say that for the superintendent's report?
Yep.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
So can we do Student Advisory Council first?
Oh, yes, sorry.
So a couple of things. We have a couple of former members here, but I'm going to let Mr. Forth speak first about the process of how we're putting in this year's Student Advisory Council.
Yeah. So first, I want to thank Dr. Jones and Mo for their help over the last several weeks. It's been very appreciative. I reached out to them to talk about how we wanted to go about the Student Advisory Committee election process and with the hopes of setting a president for the long term, hopefully outlining a way, or set of expectations on how we want to hold an election, the dates we want to have it, the timeframe, and then going from there. Whoever is the Student Outreach Coordinator next year, if it's not the same person, then can use the information given to have a set process going forward. So I thought we had a really good dialogue. We had an email thread probably going, 30, 40 emails on how we wanted to go about it. I reached out to all four high school classes, giving them the opportunity, explaining to them what the Student Advisory is, what the expectations of the student rep is, and a little bit of information on the school committee and the expectations, and how this is an opportunity for them to give their voice and their perspective to the people who make decisions on their behalf. So I sent that out. We had several students reach out. I believe we have seven candidates for the upcoming election. We'll be having an election on Friday. Students will have the opportunity to vote from 7:00 a.m. until the end of the high school day. And then from there, we will reach out to the candidates, inform them who the student reps are, and then we will touch base with the student reps from there. So that's what we have going on right now, is really just trying to figure out how we want to have an election process going forward for the next upcoming school years, and figuring out how to define the role of the election advisor. And again, thank you, Mo, for your help in defining the Student Outreach Coordinator and then the role and expectations of them. And then in November, I will touch base with you guys on a couple other ideas that I've been working on with the administration on how to best support the Student Advisory Committee. And then I reach out to Mr. Scriven as Chair of the Policy Subcommittee, and I'm going to be sending over to him an amended policy, I think, to policy JIB. And the Policy Subcommittee can decide from there if they want to break it into a separate policy or break it into multiple. But what that policy would be is an amendment on what the election process is, defining the election advisor, and defining the Student Outreach Coordinator. So that's what we have going on right now.
And my last year's, this year's students, if you want to speak, you have a few minutes. You guys are here. Do you have anything to update us on? I hope you're running again. I assume.
Okay.
Just remind folks who you are, too.
Hi, I'm Emma McKeon. I'm a junior at Whitman-Hanson. And I think we're all just going to reintroduce ourselves to you guys, just because we're the three that were on it last year. Two were seniors that they have left. But we're still here, and I'm just really hopeful that I want to be able to represent my school and talk about it.
Thanks, Emma.
Hi, I was here at September's meeting. I'm Riley Getchel, just to reintroduce myself. And like Emma said, it was an honor to serve our school committee and our district as a whole last year. And I'm excited to hopefully be reelected and to fill the spots left by the two seniors. And I hope to make it a great year.
Hi, I'm Noah Roberts. Like Riley, I was at the last meeting, but just to reiterate, I'm also excited for this year because we have been working already, talking to students, having outreach within the school. So we feel that hopefully, because of this outreach and because of what seems like a better year overall already from getting feedback from students, we'll be able to make change and let their voices be heard a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Good luck.
Thank you. Yeah. When is the election?
Friday.
Friday. Good luck.
Just follow up to David. David, you mentioned handing recommendation for policy to Policy Subcommittee. Will you bring that to the full committee for us all to see before you?
Yeah. So you bring up a great point. So I didn't know the best way, because the way I was looking at it, from my viewpoint as a Student Outreach Coordinator, I felt like I had an idea on the best way to amend the policy, just from my perspective, what I experienced over the last couple of weeks in working with Dr. Jones. But I wasn't sure if it would be appropriate for me to make a request to the Chair and put it on the school committee agenda, because I didn't want it to come across as if I was bypassing the Policy Subcommittee. So I wanted to give them the opportunity. So I reached out to Mr. Scriven, because he's Chair of the Policy Subcommittee, to get his feedback on how he wanted to approach it and what he felt would be most appropriate. I talked with the Chair and I talked to Superintendent. So how I think we are going to go about it, and that could change. But from my understanding is I'm going to send over the amendments to Mr. Scriven in that email. I'm going to provide a detailed rationale as to why I think these amendments would be appropriate. And then the Policy Subcommittee from there, which I believe is meeting in October, will deliberate on it, decide if they have any other additional recommendations. And then from there, if they do end up recommending the policy, it will then come up, I think, during Subcommittee Reports during, hopefully, November meeting. And then from there, we'll see the amended policy and hopefully can vote on it then, too.
Okay. So we're meeting next week?
Yep.
Would it be like too much to ask you to come to explain things? I just, I worry about sometimes things being lost in email and to understand the amendments to it.
Yeah.
We can like figure that out later, but that, just to throw that out there.
Just another thing while we're talking about that, is there four members on the Policy Subcommittee?
There are four of us, yeah.
So my only concern would be, is me attending creating a quorum? Or are we good? Can I speak like a public comment type of deal to the four members?
You're good.
Okay, then, yeah, I'll be there.
You're not participating. You're presenting.
And it's only five.
Yeah.
Sure.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great. Good conversation.
Okay, so I'll start. Thank you, Ms. Swan. Good conversation today, too. Transportation has been an issue since the summer. We spoke briefly about it at the last meeting, that a concerned citizen brought to our attention the 70% capacity by law in regional transportation. Our buses are at capacity in Whitman and were a little lighter in Hanson due to the fact that you have a wider space. Whitman's five square miles. Hanson, I don't know, 10 square miles, 15 square miles. So the buses had fewer students on them. And Karen, this summer, when we gave her that directive to make sure that we were hitting capacity, and that capacity heads up came from Jay Sullivan when we were talking about hold times. So again, concerned citizen brought it to our attention. Karen crunched the numbers, put things on, and we ended up losing buses and shifting tiers. That being said, George and I spoke, spoke with Karen, kind of threw it out to the elementary principals. It seems to be an issue at the elementary level with noise, I think, putting more kids on a bus. And we seat them at capacity, which in our world, it used to be maybe two in a seat. It's three in a seat by law, by what we can do. We've added, where we are adding monitors to our high-impact buses. I actually put it out today. I wanted to just brief the committee. I have had a couple of folks already volunteer to become monitors, and we will put them at our high-impact buses. Duval's given me some numbers, Conley's given me some numbers, and Indian Head has given me some numbers. With the goal, again, in COVID times, we actually, we advertised for monitors, got no hits. This would be really to oversee and assist the bus driver in maintaining some control over the buses. So our hope is to put those people on board early next week. George, you want to pop in?
Yeah. So the monitors that we put out for, the goal is for our own staff. So it's students that people recognize, whether it's paraprofessionals, whether it's people that work in the lunch system, whether it's a teacher or two. Our goal is to encourage our staff and to work with our staff so that they can keep those relationships, positive relationships hopefully going, or establish positive relationships so that we can get kids safe going from there. That is the goal, and that is what we will do in order to address this at this time.
We'll continue to look at numbers and see if we can make any adjustments on that piece. Hanson has been impacted much more greatly than the town of Whitman by this 70% capacity. And Ms. Conley, thanks for that. These were the numbers we had when we presented our budget. This came about this summer, and I absolutely will, I know Mrs. Otten already asked me on behalf of the FinCom for some things. So if you guys can get together and send me what you want, I'll send it to the FinCom.
You just stated that Hanson is more impacted, but they are both at capacity. So basically, Whitman has consistently been impacted, and Hanson is just beginning to feel the same impact that we have had consistently, is I think is a better way to describe it, or feeling. And you know something we probably should have had the fix of somebody on the bus before?
Yeah, it might not be, it's not a bad idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee on transportation?
I do want to refer back to a spreadsheet that we had last year of busing numbers, actual numbers. And it does say that last year, Indian Head had total busts, 453 kids, and they had 12 buses. Conley School, 414, with eight buses. So there are elementary schools in the district last year, and the year before, and the year before. And I know I had my kids in elementary school 10 years ago with the same complaints, loud buses, bus drivers pulling over. It's consistently been that way for Whitman schools, I can say, for 10 years. So for me, honestly, I had no idea there were 12 buses at one of our elementary schools with a little lighter being maybe 38 kids. This is what this says, 38 kids on, and that's average on a total of 12 buses. So I, you know, something has to be fixed. And clearly, it's getting fixed. I don't know, did we have savings from reducing four buses? Is there savings? I need to find out. Like, where did those buses go? Are they, are they now shifted around?
There's a $55,000 savings, I believe, overall, like moving tiers. And again, I can report out more on this.
Yeah.
However, and I believe this to be true, when you're, because of the distance in Whitman and in Hanson, there were less kids on the bus in Hanson because of the distance kids had to travel. No.
But it's supposed to be 75% capacity.
I don't, I can't explain why it has not been since.
And 38 students out of a bus that can seat 70, you know, that's half. That's half. And if that's what it was for 12 of those buses, that, you know, and I'm not going to even get into the busing, what was paid in the past. It just floors me. It just floors me that this is coming to light now.
Okay, can I move on?
Well, hold on. I don't want to.
I do think.
Hold on. You're not recognized at the moment. So you've had two opportunities to speak. I'd like to give the committee an opportunity to weigh in on.
Yeah, I just had a question for Dom. I'm not, could you just, you didn't, I just don't really understand what you're saying. I'd like to. I just don't, I'm not, you're saying it's, there's, this has been going on in Whitman for 10 years? Or I don't really get that. What are you saying?
That there were fewer buses for similar number of kids. Conley School, last year, 414 kids bust on over eight buses. 453 at Indian Head had 12 buses. So there were 52 students versus 38 on the average of all those buses last year. So I can understand why the students in Hanson are overwhelmed right now. They're certainly not useless, and I'm trying to understand why. Why? Why did other schools not have the same number of buses to afford those students the ability to have a calmer, quieter ride and so forth, or even the ability to have monitors now? So the.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I think perhaps, and I'm thinking in my head here, some of the differences were distance, the fact that you used to have McQuan and Indian Head. Granted, they were side by side, but you had different grade levels and perhaps different buses serving others. You said Jay Sullivan was the one that, when we were discussing things that made us aware of this, sort of a shame that we didn't know before. But okay, if that's the past, now we know what we have to do moving forward. I'm hopeful that your solution of monitors on the buses will provide kids a safe and comfortable ride to get back. Unfortunately, it sounds like some kids will be on a bus longer. And the students of Whitman, it's more daily practice, because they've been going through it. But as you said, you heard the same things 10, 12, 15 years ago. I do know that that was never brought, at least since I've been on the committee, it was never brought to our attention, so to speak. But if we can make sure that going forward.
And so we made that modification and didn't anticipate the noise level, and I'm glad parents brought that to our attention as well. And accountability, we'll move forward in that. And hopefully, the monitor piece will, I'd love to put monitors on every bus across the board. Right now, we're going to hit the high-impact buses that we're having issues with.
So I guess, and I know, you know, we've got to address this, right? So this came up in our last meeting, right? We've certainly gotten some feedback through email communication from folks that are concerned. And so I guess, from my perspective, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, so we clearly have concerns. I'm not sure we understand the problem, because I think there's a host of problems, right? And that's part of the issue, right? You've got Hanson's 15.6 square miles, Whitman's seven. There's a lot of pieces to that. Bus routes were changed. We have post-pandemic things in terms of people maybe feeling comfortable. You know, one of the parents told me they don't see any lines at the school anymore for drop-off and pickup, which means everyone's riding the buses. So there's a whole bunch of really moving parts to this issue. And so, you know, I know you and I had a conversation last week on this topic of, you know, we've got to really figure out what's going on. And I think you said you were going to dig into this over the next several days to really kind of get us, what is the issue? What are the issues that we're trying to solve? Is it, is it this one? The cause this one? Is it this? Is it this? Because it's just trying to get it all organized, right? So I think I'm one of 10. So I'm perfectly comfortable saying, you know, you have to have an opportunity to manage and figure it out. But at the same time, I'm not sure I'm excited or comfortable about waiting until a November meeting to kind of address the issue. So I don't know if that's something that you want to either report out publicly, or look into, or you want to have a meeting. But I just, I guess, and you guys can jump in if I'm off the mark here, but I want to make sure that we're, you know, we're kind of, this seems to be an issue that's here, and it's been here since the beginning of school, and it's mid-October. And I want to make sure that, you know, I don't know, I listen to that, and I don't want her kids having that experience. And I know you don't either, right? So what are you thinking in terms of how do we, how do you want to move this forward? I know you need some time to figure it out. But then what is that next step? Do you want to, do you want to let us know? Do you need a week to figure it out? Like, what is that next step in terms of how do you want to proceed to make sure we're addressing this?
I need some time. So when I say we're addressing it, we will address it through us right now. This is the solve, or the solution that I have that I can, I can control. I can't control the reimbursables. I can't control the routes right now. I'm having a conversation with Karen Villanueva today. She said, if you can give me two buses back, everything would be great. My thought process is, meeting with her again tomorrow to dig down in numbers and emailing Jay Sullivan, said, we did this this summer. This isn't working. Can we have some grace? I don't know. So I think I want to make sure, first of all, that I can put people on those buses to resolve that issue of discipline. We've also heard from our elementaries that student socializations, it's taking time for them to resocialize. Putting them on a tube with more kids on the bus raises that noise level, that anxiety level. So we're going to address it that way. I can report out in November. I think that's fair. It gives me three weeks to.
So and then in the interim, can we encourage, whether it's Finance Committee members, or anyone else watching, or school committee members, if they have questions? So I think they all, like, all this needs to, you know, you're the manager, right? We need to flow this through you. So if it's questions about, like, hey, how many buses did we lose? Or what changed? Or if we could get those questions to Jeff in the very near term, so that as you're now working through this, you can take all that in. Because what I don't want to do is, again, have you solve one problem and then discover another one. So if everyone could perhaps do that in short order, and then we can prioritize this issue, and depending on what you find and when you find it, there might be some communication that goes out at least publicly, or if we need to meet because something strange happened and we need to look at more buses, or look at the budget implications, then we can meet. Does that sound reasonable?
I mean, when we spoke about it last month, it was on the routes in Whitman. And I know Fred wanted to drive somebody that the bus didn't pick up.
Correct.
So I mean, these are issues in both communities. But now we're, again, I sit back and go, why wasn't this done 10 years ago? Why this isn't new, but we're finding out things from the past and solving problems for the future. So, yeah.
But I think there's a lot of pieces, right? Like, again, I'm not as involved as you are, and I'm getting the pieces of, well, if no one's sitting in line anymore and everyone's going, okay, like, how much of an impact, what does that look like, right? Do we need more buses? Is it behavioral? Is it? So I think the more we can get, so you can kind of look at that globally. We said we need to talk about the policy guidelines, too, because that came up last meeting in terms of one and a half.
Transportation guidelines.
Right. So I think we're going to have to spend some time on transportation at some point in the not-too-distant future, and certainly we need to.
Chair.
Yes.
One follow-up. When you have the volunteers for the monit, not volunteers, monitors, and you assign them to high-impact buses, as you're talking about, my next thought is, what if you have more high-impact buses without people available, right? And then there may also be some students who are conditioned to this, but they may be worthy of having a monitor, too. So how is that, you know, sort of executive decision being made? If we have, you know, three elementary schools, if there's eight buses at each, it's 24 runs. You're going to have 24 volunteers, I don't know, every day. So I'd like to get follow-up on how, you know, monitors are being assigned.
Yeah. But like I said, Don, if you can just, because I know you had some good questions, I think if you get those over to Jeff, and then that'll allow you to pull it all together and see what are those pieces. So, yes.
Just very briefly, monitors are, when's the implementation? And could we get an email update shortly after implementation so that we know what's happening? Whether it's a, hey, it's still a work in progress. Whether it's a, hey, it's still a work in progress, these are the challenges, or, hey, this is working perfectly, everybody's happy, which is hopefully the result. Do we know when we're going to be able to implement? How quickly?
I'm hoping next week, but I don't know, you know, a lot of folks don't volunteer to do extra. They're going to be paid, but that's what, the issue we had when we were trying to hire monitors in the first place, zero two years ago. So I do have a couple that have emailed Michelle already, so we'll see, we'll see the pool we have, and then we'll branch out from internally to externally, if need be.
Just love to know when it's starting to.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure, I'm, well, I shouldn't assume, anticipating you're going to send something out to the community, I mean, just based on the feedback, like, hey, just letting you know, there's going to be people on the bus, like.
That's strange lady!
Right? So you could just copy us on that, and we'll, we'll know, right? So that the kids have got it. But yes, and then I want to really try and.
I just have two things. So first is a point of clarification, is for the maximum reimbursement, is it 70% or 75%?
75%.
And is that on every bus, or is that on average?
It's capacity within the district.
Okay, so not every bus needs to be at 75%?
No.
Okay. Secondly, this is going to be wild and crazy, but this is the teacher of me. Is there a way that you, the district, can send some sort of bus behavior expectations to families? Because it, bus monitors are great, but, I mean, I don't know how many kids are on a bus 65 at capacity. One versus 65 is still massively outnumbered. So, and I don't know if there is, of course, there are expectations, but really sending it home and explaining to families and parents that this is why the buses are full, these are the things we're seeing. I know at an elementary school level, like, consequences for children is, is going to the, you know, there's, it's different than middle school and high school, but I think part of this is holding the community and the families a little bit responsible for our children's behavior on the buses. And I, I think that's an important piece of all of this, right? Like, it can't just be the 10 of us trying to figure this out. I think it's a community, we all have to expect behaviors from our students and, and communicate that to them as well. So that would be a suggestion, that could be a short-term.
Absolutely.
You know, here we go.
Yeah, I can go on the communication home, and it's also, just to remind them that it is in the student handbook, there is a bus procedure policy, there is a system of actions and consequences that take place. Oftentimes, oftentimes, you know, as a middle school principal for years, sometimes bus drivers want to just give the kid the benefit of the doubt, or they want to not do what they need to do. Sometimes you just need to write the slips. The first slip is usually obviously the warning, you know, the written warning, and then we move to action. But it, it does, it, there, there is a process in place, we just have to make sure that our bus company feels comfortable enough to do it if kids aren't behaving, and we also have to make sure that the monitors are aware that they need to do it also.
Okay. So, an important issue, one that has to be resolved, but at the same time, you know, again, the root causes have to be determined, so this is, we picked up, so, move on. I'd like to move on. So I'm going to give real short latitude here, but go ahead.
Yes, I do think that the cost of the buses do need to go in. Whitman is paying 80% of the bus and has full buses and have, it should be split out 60/40. And, and because it's broken out into a separate bill, we are paying way more, a much larger proportion of that, and now finding out that our children have been on packed buses this entire time, and while we're paying more for the buses, is, is something that I think we need to talk about. Thank you.
All right. Moving on.
All right. So, update on education. So one of the things we're trying to do this year is, is bring to light to the committee, to the, to the school community, things that are happening in our buildings. So today, we have Karen Downey and Dr. Jones here to speak on, on some of the stuff that's happening in their schools. Next month, you'll see different principals and other leaders within the district talking about education. So Karen, why don't you come?
Okay, cool. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us. As Jeff said, I'm the principal at the Conley School, Karen Downey. I've seen many of you. We are very, very excited to be invited here. I'll keep it brief because I know you have a hefty agenda today. So a few things that are happening at Conley, and just to let you know, at, at the elementary level, I know we're talking about buses, but there, we've never been in a better position at elementary, and I think you've heard me say that before. We have an ELA program, we have a math program, we have a science curriculum that is consistent across the district. So our kids are getting very, very similar experiences, no matter what grade they're in, no matter what school they go to. And that's something, I've been around for a while, that's, that's exciting, and it's new, and thank you to all of you for that. Also, our playgrounds, the playgrounds at Duval and Conley are in process and almost done, and they are absolutely stunning and beautiful. If you get a chance, please ride by them and see them, and I thank the taxpayers for providing those for us. We're very, very excited. The kids are out of their minds watching these be put up, and they're so excited. Our fans were installed today, something that we have been asking for, for 10 years, so thank you for those too. That's exciting. The teachers were super excited about those, so thank you. So a couple of things going on at Conley. We have booked our grade three field trip to Plymouth Patuxet. It's a new, formerly the plantation. We'll be going in November for our third graders, and I was talking to the third grade team today, those kids don't know what a field trip is. So how exciting is that? They were asking questions like, do we go after school? What do we do about lunch? Who brings us our lunch? They wanted to know, how do we get there? Who comes with us? So the teachers were, we were giggling about it today. It's a little sad, but it's very, very exciting that we're back in track to, for field trips, and the kids are really, really excited. I think once, we had a couple of kids who were like, I don't think I'm going to go. But I think once they, they see it and experience it, they'll be all on it. Another thing that we're doing at Conley, in the springtime, so last spring, we interview our fourth graders to be part of our news crew, so they have to apply for the job, there's an application, they come and have an interview, not everybody gets an interview, but they, they do get an interview, and then they get their job, their job appointment letter. And so this week, even given all of our technology difficulties, we were finally able to go live with our first news crew. We have three news crews, and they are the ones who run the equipment, and every fifth grader gets a chance to be an anchor, but the news crew kids were so excited, they've been practicing, and they're ready. So we have a camera person, a, a voice control person, a script person, a director, so the kids are really excited about that. And you can watch it on YouTube if you're really inclined. Two minutes of excitement. Student council is also starting up, it's really exciting to see posters in the hallways. We have two students from every third, fourth, and fifth grade classroom who will be voted in as student council members. We haven't had student council in a couple of years, so we're really excited about that. And one of the things that we're doing differently this year is we are electing from our student council members, senators, a president, and then a vice president, and they will meet with me monthly as sort of the principal's council, so we're really excited about that. We're going to be taking up important issues like, what do we do when there's a lot of paper towel on the bathroom floors? So stay tuned, I'm sure you'll be looking for updates on that. All-school meeting is back, we are very, very excited. We had the whole school together in September, we have our second one on Friday, and we're, we're just, it's so, it's, it's awesome to see all the kids together, it was, it's been a lot of fun. Conley University happened last week. This is something that we're really proud of, and we were very excited to be able to bring back. Parents and students sign up for a list of classes that they can take, they have to come to my required course, which goes through things in the handbook, and then they're available to take three classes of whatever they like. We had calm classroom, we had responsive classroom, we had members from the district intervention team teaching about my path. So I was, I was a little nervous that it wasn't going to happen this year. We had, I was, so I decided that I was going to lower my expectations. I would be happy if we had six staff members, and I was going to be happy if we had about 40 families who showed up. We had 30 staff members who taught a class, and 113 families showed up. So people are ready to be back, and we're ready to accept them, so thanks. Finally, what we've already done this year, one of our families is struggling with childhood cancer, and this month was Go Gold for Cancer Month. They brought us a little gold boot, a little gold rain boot, and asked if we would, we just put it out for a couple of days, three days, to collect spare change, and our Conley community raised $709 in three, three days with pennies, nickels, and dimes, so that was really cool. I know I probably won't see you again until after the New Year for, for this kind of an update, so just coming attractions, we have a dental clinic that's starting December 16th, that's something we've had for a long time. Families who don't have dental insurance can take advantage of the dental clinic. We have technicians who come in and they clean the kids' teeth, it's been really popular, we have a lot of families who take advantage of that. We have our PAC is sponsoring the Brain Show, which is something that if you were a Conley family, you know, this is wildly popular. We have two assemblies during the school day, and then we do a family event at night, and that's back, we haven't had them since 2016, so we're excited about that. Our Thanksgiving basket tradition will take place, and that will continue. And then we also are looking forward to bringing back our Jingle Bell Dance Off, so stay tuned for updates about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, go ahead with everything.
You're up, Dr. Jones. Start the timer.
I was told to be brief, so hello, goodbye.
Start the timer.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything for you, Fred. I'm Dr. Jones, I'm the principal here at the high school. We've had a pretty exciting year so far to open up. We had a couple of goals that we wanted to hit coming back this year. We knew that we had to focus on culture, we knew that we had to focus on academic mindset, and just different things that had kind of slipped over the, over the past year. So we really had to focus on that, and in doing that, I have to give a shout-out to all the staff here that have really pitched in and done a lot of work to make that happen for students. So in the opening of the year, we had some diversity, equity, inclusion training by an individual that's known for that in the area, and the staff created their own plans or own topics that we're going to explore through the course of the year and draw that thread through the year, how we can build on that whole idea of community and making the high school a more welcoming, inclusive community for everybody here. And then we also had some other speakers come in, guest speakers come in, talking about goal-setting, talking about being a better human being, talking about an academic mindset, and talking about social media and branding, and how students appear on social media. And we've taken different pieces of all those, and we've kind of drawn them out, because a speaker showing up for one-time event isn't effective. What you have to do is take the things that they've done, and one of the reasons I want to give a shout-out to our faculty is because they've stepped forward with that, and they're kind of helping pick that banner up. Today, just as a, as an example, we had a busy day here at the high school today. We had the Credit for Life Fair going on, at the same time we had the PSATs going on. So PSATs were sophomores, juniors, Credit for Life were seniors, and we had Ed Garrity back with the freshmen to do more in-depth workshop with the freshmen on goal-setting and doing well, and setting yourself up for success over the next four years in high school, which then culminated in the letter-writing activity back in their homerooms with their teachers, so staff was involved in that. The other piece is, we just had a professional development day, a half-day professional development day, and we had our own staff stepping forward and running PD for our staff on ELL students to welcome this new burgeoning population into our school, and make sure that teachers are receiving the support they need in the classroom, so that they're, while they're attending to that, they can attend to the students, so everybody receives a quality education that we can all provide them with. That's all been going really well, and the idea that we're preparing students for life. I've heard recently that why is it we're always preparing students in education, we're always preparing them for the next step in education, and we kind of leave the idea of life out of it, or career, or being successful at whatever they choose to do when they're out of here. So, yes, we still have our really strong college-track So yes, we still have our really strong college track preparation, but we're also now moving forward with innovation pathways. And so we're looking at two areas. We're looking at healthcare and we're looking at business. We've submitted the first part of the grant or the first planning part of the grant, which should bring in some monies. And then we, by the end of this month, are submitting this next part of the grant. And then we'll find out probably around January-ish if we've been accepted to submit the last part. And then we'll find out around March if we're good to go for next fall, which will bring in certification programs, build bonds with community members, businesses, and move students forward in a way that offers them opportunities that aren't just necessarily college. And that's, that's well on its way. And that is my brief. How did I do? Hit stop. How did I? That's my brief. So we're, things are working well. Teachers are pitching in and we're right on track with the goals that we set for community, wellness, and academic mindset.
Sir, thank you for that. How's your library transformation coming?
My library transformation coming, as you can see over here, we've got our tables. And as you can see behind us, we've got the bookshelves that were moved over here before for PSA T testing so we could use this while we still had students over there. My chair should be in, in about two weeks, I believe was the date that was given. So then we'll have chairs over there. You'll also have some chairs in that area there. We've noticed increased traffic in the library. We're starting to bring students down or classes down so that we can have different classes in the library where the librarian media specialist will be teaching different courses on research and many lessons and co-teaching basically with the classroom teacher. It's also, we're also starting to gear up for the Summer Read SmackDown where we're starting to select books that the students will have access to and things like that. But it's, it's coming along really well. I'm pleased with it so far. I'd rather have my chairs, but I'm pleased with it so far.
The eyeball test from upstairs, when he looks down, every, every period there are kids in the library. And it's nice to see that. Haven't seen that since pre-COVID. And now with the flexible seating and the kids out and about, it is, it's nice to see their kids down here doing things and, and working. And I did drop in, in the drive today, pictures from Credit for Life. It was pretty awesome. Pretty awesome. I got to talk to some kids. They were doing some fun things and they really bought into it. The seniors were really buying into it.
I was a volunteer there and the kids, they loved it. They were all excited about it. Lots of, lots of enthusiasm. It was great.
It was pretty good. It was really good. Thanks, Chris. Any other questions for Chris?
No. Thank you both. Thank you.
Next up, MCAS came out. Probably read some things in the Globe, Twitter, wherever, just about MCAS. George and Nikki, our Director of Equity and MTS, are going to give you an overview of where we are.
Hey, folks. Yeah, I got it. So a quick, brief presentation. We do this every year, right? Every year we do something with MCAS. Every year we leave here and it's like, can we get more? Can we try this? Can we do this? Like I said, the last couple of years is over 500 to 600 different types of graphs that you can get an end with. So if you have a question, just call, come in, we can sit down and we can go from there. This is probably the best presentation that we had because I didn't do it, Nikki did. And it also, it's a high-level macro view. But what we're able to bring now is where we're at comparing what we do in the district as far as now having curriculum and what we also can do with our universal screeners. So what's going to happen today is that, this correctly, see? So the data to be presented are percentages of the students assessed for that group, grade, school, and district. When we use the words universal screeners, those are our diagnostics, three times a year, an MCAS to the state assessment. Now, before anybody asks, I'll put this in a PDF and I'll give it to you tomorrow and it will go in the drive. The reason why I didn't want to do that today was because I wanted to make the macro and I wanted to make sure that we're just listening and talking because it's not going to be that long. So it's more not the percentages and the numbers, it's more the thoughts.
Okay, so this is looking at our universal screener data, data. And that is our baseline for the year, for this year. So what we did with this, presented this data, is we took our total elementary students who scored in the approaching, at grade level or above. And those are consistent, if you're familiar with MCAS, those are consistent with when you hear MCAS, partially meeting, meeting, and exceeding expectations. So there's similarity in there. So with this start of the year baseline assessment, we can see that 78% of our students at the elementary level are within that threshold and 79% of our students are from math, so reading and math. Middle school, we can see 72% of our students are within that threshold and 67% from math. And what our end of the year goal is a minimum of 80%. And I say minimum because obviously we want higher, but based on research, what research says is your minimum threshold should be, you should be aiming for 80% of your students are within that ballpark. So that's our minimum goal. Obviously, we're Whitman Hansen, we want higher, but that's, that's what we put down there as our minimum. And I think our three key takeaways from this, when I saw this data, I was actually very excited because my look at this says what you have committed to as a school committee and as community in terms of curriculum is actually paying off for our elementaries. Okay, we're entering this space with our students performing. These don't include our kindergartners, so our students are coming in already with some skills. Obviously, when you see the breakdowns, you'll see that it's bearing out with our elementaries. And that making this commitment for our middle schools is going to be valuable because we can bring up those scores for our middle schools as well. The other piece is the data let, let us know that what we did with keep being consistent at the elementary in terms of scheduling and access is a smart move for us to keep like experiences for our students. So this is reaffirming data for us and our teams around what we've done, what we're committing to and where we want to move to. So that's our baseline for the, for this year for starting off. And our curriculum, as you can see, oh, we can go to the next one. So our curriculum, this is our MCAS data from last spring. So our curriculum aligns with our framework, another excellent commitment on behalf of the school committee and our communities to making sure that our students are being taught the skills they need to be successful. Now, MCAS data, we want to obviously see our students beyond because it's high stakes when they get to the high school level. You want to see your students on your first attempt at those tests pre-COVID, which is 95 to 99. That's where our pre-COVID numbers were. So we're not obviously there yet, but when I look at this data, I say, okay, we've met our minimum threshold of that 80% too. We've already exceeded that. So this is end of the year data saying that we are 80% or higher and achieving that same similar experience around partially meeting, meeting, or exceeding expectations. And that we now have a commitment with our curriculum, again, at the middle school, because you can see the dip. Our middle school curriculum is now going to highlight the standards. And what our teams are doing is right now, our curriculum-based teams and our intervention teams, again, a commitment on part of the school committee and the communities is to do an item analysis and really dig at, okay, this is an overarching view, but what, where are we, where are our strengths? Where are we hitting our standards well with the MCAS? And where, where are our areas for improvement so that we can only foresee these numbers are going to go up? So while this is an end of the year for last year, this becomes our baseline for our MCAS now moving forward because we are, we, we are going to get back to that pre-pandemic. So now we're going to use this as our moving forward target.
So if we look at the three-year overview for MCAS, and the reason why we wanted to show you this was we just wanted to show you 2019's pre-pandemic. So the scores were higher. The scores were higher everywhere. The scores were higher all over the state. We then look at 2020, we took our, the state said we didn't have to test, 2021, and now 2022. You are seeing some trends that are now moving upward again as to what it is that the scores the kids are getting. Pre-pandemic, 94% of our high school students met the requirements for graduation. 2022, the state has now basically said that COVID is over. They had a, they had a thing two weeks ago. We all watched it and basically they said you now have accountability status once again beginning this year for those schools that will get it. And we're going after you finding all the kids that you lost due to attendance. That does not necessarily impact us, but that impacts bigger, bigger cities, bigger towns, things of that nature. So this is the baseline year. So what is good and what is bad about that? We have now analyzed our areas of weakness. We now know what our baseline scores were because they came out from the state on MCAS. And now we have a plan moving forward to make sure we're hitting our targets. So this slide was just simply that, pre-pandemic, we're not there yet. 21 and 22, we're climbing out. It is also interesting to see that when you look at our numbers a little more in-depth, we had a dip in reading and ELA, but our numbers are starting to get stronger in math. I will attribute that to the fourth year, we have math at the elementary level, and now we have math in the accelerated program, the same program at the middle school level. The last slide, because I'm still quicker than Chris Jones, the last slide is that we're currently conducting district and school curriculum analysis to identify strengths and areas of weakness for improvement. We're comparing what those are. Our interventionists are not only doing what they daily do with students, but they're also working with the coordinators to make sure that we know what we teach is based on the frameworks. Then we can attack how we teach it if we need to have different ways of teaching it in order to do it. The new K-8 curriculum aligns with the standards, so when we review this data, we can be able to use our curriculum to address needs and continue to develop strengths. I think it's also important, we talked a lot about the curriculum. K-8, we use iReady, which is by Curriculum Associates, and that's the program we are now using for math. It's K-8. It's our first year in the middle school with it because we had the DESI Acceleration Grant, and then we'll be buying and we'll be purchasing the companion 6 to 8 when the grant is over for the next years. So that's what will happen, why we had the larger, please also remember, this is my plug, so everybody doesn't take the cash that's in there, Jeffrey. We had a lot of money and we were on that cycle. And last year's budgets, we moved, removed some of that cycle because we were able to use it in different ways, so that does have to come back. But it's K-8 by Curriculum Associates iReady Math. That is for our program in math and that is for our diagnostic that we use with the students. The best thing about that diagnostic is it then gives students an individual learning path that they work on during the day outside of the class. But it's built into the day, all levels. In ELA, we use Houghton-Mifflin, HMH, Houghton-Mifflin-Harcourt, and that is inter-reading. Inter-reading is the K-5, a six, five level, 6 to 8. The sister companion is inter-literature. So it's the same, just for the different levels. We are also moving now at the elementary, we use the iReady Diagnostic for reading. And we are also seeing now that we're going to start using that for reading at the grades 6 to 8, just because it has the data that we can use not only from an individual, but from a classroom, class to class, school to school, and then it's compared to the state. Also for K-5 now, we've made the commitment because if some of you remember, we used to use what's called No Atom. It was on a grant from the Gelfand. We have totally changed that, not only from a cost perspective, but from an engagement perspective and a readability perspective. So we use No Atom. We are in the second of our three-year with No Atom. We did see that the, excuse me, no, No Atom, no. Ah, gosh darn it. Mystery Science. Mystery Science. So we use Mystery Science. We moved away from No Atom. We have found that there are also some gaps, so a lot of summer curriculum work was done with that. And we, now we supplement what's called Generation Genius. Furthermore, in grade five, so we can attack those standards because sometimes it's not fair to our grade five teachers that we take the science in third, excuse me, in fifth, and that sometimes it's just, hey, here it is, go. So in fifth grade, we're also using what's called SAVIS Science, and that's on a one-year trial, just to see if we can really solidify and move those gaps. As we move from the elementary into the middle, we're going to start to see, I guarantee, we're going to start to see with our interventionists, with our curriculum people, with our coordinators, that those gains that we're making at the elementary will then ascend into the secondary or the middle school. Now, everybody's thinking, well, what does that look like for high school? So in high school, we are now going to have the ability to take our eighth grade, end-of-year third universal screener, our third diagnostic, pre-populate our seminar study halls or our MTSS study halls that we now have for ninth graders so that as kids come in, if they are at risk or if we feel they are at risk, they will get that piece walking into high school. In high school, we use iXL. You might have heard of it. It's a different kind of screener because iReady only goes to eighth grade. But we'll be able to take that through the math and ELA classes when they walk into the high school during those first couple of weeks so that we can make sure that we've identified those weakness areas if we haven't already. So I guess what I'm trying to say is thanks to all of you, thanks to the community. We are making strides. It's fun to get up here and say, no, actually, we have curriculum, we have benchmarks, we have things that we're moving forward, and we just wanted to do this comparison so that you could know. If there are questions, specifics, schools, yada, 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 whatever you can think of, we have a report for it. Just give me an email, give me a call, and we'll, we'll go from there. We can help out. But this will be in the drive tomorrow so that you can all look at it and tear through it and come up with more questions if you have.
Thank you.
So, so we are seeing, because of that investment in interventionists, in curriculum that we didn't have since 2001, K-6, K-5, 6 through 8 with the investment in that. And we need to, I'm going to start plugging, and we're going to talk a little budget later on, but this needs to stay in, moving forward in the budget to make sure our kids are learning. And now, we're not teaching to the test. We're teaching the framework and kids are now, you're seeing it in the assessments that they're doing better.
Chris, a question. Sorry. Fred, real quick. How far behind are we? Are we, and are we rapidly closing the gap from?
Sure. So we have, we have a, we are still behind. We are making better gains. The state did just change their formula moving forward for accountability. However, if you're asking where our students are, we have, 80% of our students are within one grade level. We do have some students who are up to three to four grade levels below. So that's where we're working with our most serious remediations. Remember that in a tiered system, if we look at MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, we have tier one, which is your in-class, and that's where they do some of their work I just described on their path. We have tier two, where depending on the level, you come out of class, we break you up into small groups based on the standards that you're in deficit. And then we have tier three, which is an additional piece. And the best I can equate that to is someone who has an early phonetic issue that isn't identified for special ed yet because this is on the road to not get to special ed or at least on the road to say we've done everything we can before special ed, and you can get a tier three intervention. So 80% of our kids are within one grade level, six months of one grade level. And then we do have some that are still below, but at least now we can identify, address, and try to remediate those. So that's key.
Great. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I just have a question about the data, the presentation of it. So you grouped all the students into partially meeting and exceeding. But on DESI's website, it groups them into meeting and exceeding. The partially is separate. So, and I understand like in 10th grade, really, we're looking at the kids who are not meeting expectations, right? But they're changing the minimum score in grade 10. So is there, I know that the data is there, but maybe to tease out for us to see, because I think the interventions that we have now, like at the elementary school, the power blocks, right? Like the number of students who are partially meeting, right? Obviously, their needs are being met, but what are we doing for the students who are meeting to put them in the exceeding category?
So, so it's good that you asked that. So what's taking place is we revamped what we did with interventions. So interventions are now at a stag, at a set point in every grade at every school. And we've taken as many people as we can, and we made the investment now into interventionist power professionals at each school so that we can get the lowest numbers you can by the standards. Now, when we break kids up in standards, we are now trying to say, we are not yet have got to the different levels of exceeding and partially exceed, you know, partially meeting and, and meeting. What we now have done is to say though, we can now break you up into your areas by standard. So the ones that are closest or the ones that are most needy or the ones that are high can now have their own group. So that's what we're trying to do now. Currently, they're analyzing both the MCAS scores and the universal screener scores so that in the future, which is going to be round two post-January, we will then be able to say, these students with these deficits got this score. And if we can chunk those students, we can move them from partially into meeting or from meeting into exceeding. But we're not there yet with our group. But that's the goal.
Okay. And I just wanted to add, because when I put that question, and when you see the breakdowns, because there's a graph in there that breaks down partially meeting, meeting, and exceeding, and you'll see that graph, and we talked about, like our goal is to move all of that over, right? Like ever get, take a chunk from of kids and hopefully get them all up. And the other piece is with, to your point with the DESI standards, the partially meeting are still going to be able to like receive the diploma, which is not our only goal. We want them to have the skills, but it is an important goal that we recognize. So even though partially meeting is not, we want, again, them to be higher than that than we want, but that, that's the minimum threshold that we need to make sure we're meeting. And so it's still a graduation, they still get their diploma, they still check that box. What it will end up being is that EPP, that education condition group plan. So that's what we'll be able to say, well, what are we going to do in the next two years? Because that's only your sophomore year, to make sure that you could quote unquote be at a higher level. So I think it's still important to include the partially meeting. I, I agree. Like I know when, if you look at the DESI website, they'll just put on meeting and, and exceeding, which is important information. But for us, partially meeting still gets them that diploma, which is an important piece. And I want people to feel good about that we're getting our kids where they need to be to get that diploma, but we're going to own the, the piece where we have to then write the EPP because our goal is always to move them even more.
Right. And I think, just to add to that, I asked the question just because I teach type grade ELA.
Yeah, yeah.
And we are always doing interventions for our partially meeting students, but we're not doing interventions for our students who are meeting to put them in the exceeding. And I think that we need to spend as much time on all of those students. And obviously the not meeting as well. So that's the only reason why I asked the question.
Yeah, I agree. That's in the plan. Thank you.
Anyone else? Just a quick, quick, quick question, sorry. That screening tool, is that internal or is that state? So is that something that we're pre-screening through our tools?
That is our, the universal screener tool, what we call the universal screener, is part of the curriculum that we have chosen. It is also, but it is the highest rated on ed research. It's the highest rated diagnostic tool that's out there.
So that first slide is kind of just our own internal analysis of where we're at. It's not the state reporting. We're using that to kind of then see how we progress.
To match the state reporting to move forward.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're a genius, George. You're a genius.
So, yeah, just moving forward, I submitted my goals or a draft of my goals for you to review or just think through, looking for feedback. I heard none. So basically, hopefully you're in favor of that because I started working on them already. So goal number one would be strategic plan development, and that's going to go through from January to June. We're looking at developing a five-year strategic plan for the district. We've got consultants already, members of the committee will be heavily involved in that strategic plan. Social emotional learning is another goal. I think we're looking post-COVID to see where our students are at. We have different tools that we're going to be assessing our students to see where they are at in the moment and in the future. And we also have the offshoot of the school committee, one of the school committee pilots over the summer of culture. We happen to be meeting on Monday on that. That's going to go into the social emotional learning goal that I have. Number three is safe and secure schools through Gideon, our new Director of Technology, and Tim, our Director of Facilities. I will be working with them to review through a different set of eyes or a different lens what we have in district to make sure we are safe, secure, moving forward into the next year. And also working on the Whitman Middle School project. And then uniformity, again, from the summer of elementary start times and a later start time for the high school. I already have a subcommittee working on that. We are meeting on Tuesday with hopefully a report to the school committee on where we're at, if it impacts the budget or any type of decisions impact the FY24 budget if we have to make any moves around start times. So those are the four items that formally I'm working with, but as you know, I'm working with a thousand other things. Transportation came up today too. So just a multitude of things. But these are the pieces that I'm going to present to you over the course of the year for formal assessment in June.
Do you want to have any feedback?
Yeah, if anything, sure.
Otherwise, we probably, we should vote them.
Yes.
Motion to accept the superintendent's goals as presented.
Do we got a second?
Second.
Great. Have a good one.
I'm looking at the slide. So it's slide four, strategic plan development. So under professional culture, you just say incorporate equity work as we move to the January through June timeline. Can you elaborate a little on equity?
Sure. Through, through our equity audit that we did last year, moving that, the pieces that we found in the recommendations in the equity audit will be in that strategic plan. So bullets in that strategic plan. And these are just little pieces of how we developed that strategic plan, that that plan will incorporate safe and community relationships and all of those, just little highlights of that.
Okay. So the measurement would be just referring back to that equity document?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
The only thing I had, I jotted it last time when I never shared it with you, so my bad. Staring at it right here. But on that start times one, I know you alluded to making sure that we have it in time for the budget process. So can we tie that to like the December? Because right now, I think you said like December 9 decision. But on that start times one, I know you alluded to making sure that we have it in time for the budget process. So can we tie that to like the December, I think, because right now, I think you said like December 9 decision. So I don't think we need to amend the goals or anything, but just formally, we're all saying the same thing in this meeting, which is your goal is to have that for our December 9 meeting.
If there's a financial impact, correct.
Awesome. Great, that's all I had. Okay, any other discussion? Otherwise, we'll do this to vote. All those in favor?
Thank you. Moving on, do you want me to pass over regional agreement, or you want to talk about that?
Why don't you keep doing on your stuff? I'll do that at the end.
Just a very quick enrollment update. Our numbers, I don't have the numbers that we submitted to the state yet, because we've asked for an extension due to our, our network issues. We had that extension. But just to let you know, I'm going to try to provide you something every month, if we have new enrollments every month. But since September, as of October 5th, we've had 38 new students join our district. So the numbers that I submit to you in September change. Four, just a simple four for EI, two in pre-K. EI is early intervention, they're in for testing. I assume they're going to come in. Seven at Conley, two at Duval, zero at Indian Head, two at Hanson Middle, eight at Whitten Middle, and 13 at the high school. So our numbers shift. I don't have withdrawals, because we, our, our registrar is new to tracking the enrollments, but I will have both as we move forward. But just so you know, when we schedule classes over the summer, principals put kids in classes, that ebbs and flows, and you might have 17 in a classroom at some point. And again, our numbers are very good in the district, but by December, there might be 20. So that ebbs and flows throughout the course of the year, and I think people get lost, oh wow, these are great numbers. And if we have in the high school, 13 is diffuse within, you know, 1,100 students, it's pretty easy. Eight at Whitten Middle School can impact a grade, two in sixth, two in seventh, four in eighth. Definitely impacts the grade where, where Mr. Frost puts them. So I'm going to report out on enrollment every month, just as far as we ebb and flow, if that's okay with the committee. It's just something we haven't done in the past, and I'm going to, I'm going to begin it. Any questions?
Just, once we can get them, I appreciate the pluses, but also the minuses.
Absolutely. Bob, do you want to give a quick athletic report?
I'd be super pleased with that.
There is a, a document on your, on your table too, of a letter that Bob has put in front of you.
Before I do that, I just wanted to let you guys know, Don, there, I won't even read it, but we did have our Hall of Fame inductions on Sunday. It was a terrific culmination to homecoming weekend. Homecoming game was fantastic. We had the parade of champions, and the, most of the Hall of Famers were there. It was the most well-attended game from the home side that we've had in several years, so it was a lot of fun. And then the, the Hall of Fame on Sunday was, was a terrific event. I did want to let you know that the two eighth-grade waivers are still pending, girls hockey and gymnastics. Gymnastics, we may not use it, even if we get it, because we're hoping the numbers of the high school will be good enough, but we're going to hopefully have it in our back pocket in case we need it. Hockey, if we get approved, we will use it. In your, I left it on at each seat, so you have it. Don and I had spoke, I think at the beginning of September, about the concerns about the fact that the district does not provide uniforms for our students. We're the only school in our league that does not. I've been the basketball coach, I think I'm going on for my 24th year here at Whitten Hanson, as the basketball coach, and the school has never purchased a single uniform for any team. And so I just did a little bit of legwork and research trying to come up with a plan. This is, you know, for, for all of you to consider as you head into budget season. I think it's, would be money well spent in the grand scheme of our budget. We would put it on a cycle so that each team, every, it's a four-year cycle, and then we go start, start it up again. What I put in the letter to you, the way that we would do it, is I kind of, I asked the coaches for opinions about when was the last time they've had uniforms, when they need, need them again. And I kind of staggered it based on, like football, for example, there are a lot of players, so that year, the money wouldn't go as far, because they need more uniforms. Uniforms that we purchase get sent down to JV and freshmen when they're done, except for sports like cross-country, or swimming, or gymnastics, where it's a more personal uniform. They get it as a freshman, and they keep it for the four years, and that's what they would have. So that's the proposal I have for you in there. I, I really think for tonight, it's for me to answer any questions you might have now, but probably budget season, we could talk about it again. That amount that I gave you, you guys may decide to, hey, give us more, or you may decide, hey, I can't give you that much, maybe it's going to be less. And we would work together with the coaching staff to appro, you know, to apportion that in a fair and equitable way. It can't be, you can't come up with a formula like X number of students, because different uniforms, different sports, cost different amounts of money. I did put in that, just while I'm the athletic director and the basketball coach, that boys' basketball wouldn't partake in it while I'm here. And I just think it, I just think it makes sense. I have no problem doing that, because I just have no problem doing that. I just think it'll be better for everybody, so there's nobody saying, how come this team got this and this team got that? Obviously, when I retire, whoever the next person is, it would, it should probably be different. But I think that that's a good proposal. I think that that system will work well. We've got great coaches that work together, so I, I think that plan would, would work.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sure. I, I just, I, I, I think it's silly that you, sorry, put in here that you, the boys' basketball program wouldn't partake in this. I just, I think that if you provided in itemized, like this is what we spent, I think that no one would make those claims. I understand what you're saying, but I also don't think that you or the boys should have to fundraise extra to get the same thing. If we as a school committee decide to put this money in the budget, then all of the programs should have it. Just because you're the athletic director and the basketball coach shouldn't mean that those student athletes don't get these things also.
They will still, they will still get.
No, I know, but they might have to work an extra Columbus Day, you know, clinic, where the girls' basketball team might not have to, right?
Yeah.
And I, I don't know. I understand where you're coming from, but I also think that there's a way that it can be done where.
Trust me, everything that's.
I know, I know.
Everything that happens in the school district.
I know, I do.
Gets signed off by other people. But I think sometimes the perception, it just, I think it is better for everybody if we do it that way. I, I appreciate that. If you all decide and you don't want it to be done that way, every year, I would report out where the money went, you know, what each team got. But I just don't want, I just think it takes away the notion that people are going to like be, how come that team got this, and how come that team got that? I think that they have to trust me as the athletic director, that I would apportion it the way that, working with the coaches, what would be equitable.
Don, I think you were right.
Yeah. Thank you very much for doing this. I appreciate that phone call too. It, it really came about because I had a question on our year-end transfers, that we actually had the athletic supply line, and you have an athletic equipment line that had maybe $800 left over, it was transferred to another line. And I was just thinking that I've had parents ask where, you know, certain equipment is not available or needs to be replenished, so fundraising was, you know, asked from, of their coaches and so forth. So my concern as a school committee member with the budget is, are we presenting a true budget of what our true costs are? You know, and you've done an amazing job with, with supporting every team and every coach with fundraising and providing opportunities, car washes and so forth. But at the end of the day, we should really be presenting to the towns what the true cost of school is. And if you try out for a team, and you make the track team, I would hope that you weren't then asked, here's, here's your tank top, and it's 20 bucks. You know, because that, that is, has happened. And the notion also, you know, we have to keep in mind of what the towns can afford. The towns are our families. The towns are those taxpayers. And I, I had conversations with families too. Families, working parents are being asked at this time, four times to dip into their pockets. And I'll tell you, it's first is their property taxes, then they pay a user fee, and they pay that with no questions asked, and they do that. Second is maybe that out of pocket, right? Because the uniforms, we haven't covered it. Pay, pay 20 bucks for, okay, I'll pay 20 bucks for the track tank. I get to keep it, I know. And then the fourth is the fundraising. And who pays that? We do. I support your kids, I support your fundraiser, your car wash, I'll go out. So we're just, it's our, our town, it's our families that are, that are paying for this. So I appreciate the time, and thank you for coming forward. So this is information that we'll take to budget time.
Excellent.
Chris?
Yeah, I just kind of want to piggyback on what Hillary was saying. Doesn't feel right to me to, to not have the basketball program receive the same benefits as all the other programs. I think as long as we're doing things the right way, and we're, we're transparent with how we're doing them, that should be enough. And it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't feel right to do it any other way.
The only thing from, I, I, again, I, I appreciate, I agree with you, but the problem is everything that, to this point, is transparent. Everything is on the warrants that everybody signs, right? Everybody, there's no expense, the school never writes a check that the school committee doesn't oversee, and there's still sometimes that perception. So that's why, but if you, if, listen, I wouldn't argue it. If you all feel like you'd like to take that provision out, I certainly would welcome it.
Yeah, I, I'd rather say like we could make an extra effort to communicate better, or, you know, more thoroughly of what, how things are, not necessarily relying on a once-a-year audit to say everything's done. You know what I mean? Just more of a transparent effort to show how things are divvied up and whatnot, rather than say, nope, we're not going to do it because we're afraid of the, you know, appearance of it, you know?
I, I appreciate that, I recognize that.
And if we're planning for a budget, you might retire someday.
I will retire, I will retire someday.
Could be next year.
Put it in the budget.
Depends on how he does this year. Could be next year.
And, and so we have to plan for that cost.
Sure.
Right? And I think, I mean, that's, that's ultimately, you know, I, that, that's the other piece of that. We should be preparing and planning for that cost.
Fred? And I'll jump on the bandwagon. I agree, everything should be equitable.
Okay.
You know, for everyone, period.
Yep.
That being said, we currently fundraise for our uniforms?
We do.
Okay, so we would be.
And, and some teams, some of the uniforms that kids keep, they may buy their shirt, and then they get to keep it, and then they have that for their entire time. Other uniforms that they fundraise for, when they're done, they go to the JV or the freshman, and that's just kind of the cycle that they use.
So would I be fair in saying that those fundraising efforts would now be eliminated?
Well, no, I think that most of, every school does these fundraisers, even though that they supply uniforms, but they go for the extras that kids get. Like, hey, they want to wear their jacket, they want to get a sweatshirt, they want to go play a team on a state, or whatever. It's the extras that they shouldn't have to be raising for the things that the school and the community should be providing. So they would still do their fundraising, but it would be something that would be the extras.
So it would be reduced?
Yeah, it would be what, what they feel like they need to do, like for their team. Every team that kind of sets a goal to kind of figure out what they want, if they want something extra, something new on their team, they go out and they work for it. I, you know, fundraising's not a bad thing, because it teaches the, the students a, a lesson about working for something. I mean, the car washes that they do, they go and they, they work on it together. So there's a benefit aside from the money with it. So it would be still fundraisers, but it probably, probably not as much, because they wouldn't need to be raising for, for uniforms.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob. I told you, I told Bob about that line in there. I told him today.
Thank you, everybody.
I'm just going to do briefly, the, there's no financial report. John will report out, he still hasn't closed the books, and he's on his way to Florida tomorrow morning, so we gave him the night off since he's not on. He will be out for the week. I talked a little bit about a timeline for budget this year, a little bit different, and I ran it by the budget subcommittee that I'd report out today. My goal, and this will happen, we will present to the school committee a rough draft of the budget on December 21st, right before the holiday break. We will, it'll be a school committee meeting, but we'll go over the budget numbers prior to the public hearing on budget. I earmarked January 11th to present to the boards of selectmen in the FinCom. However, I'd like to go to each board of selectmen and get their feedback first, before I set it, and say, okay, I decided on this date, you got to come. So over the next month, I will solicit feedback from both boards of selectmen when we could have that meeting, and then 2-1, February 1st, will be the public hearing on the budget. And then we'll go from there. But the thought process through budget subcommittee is, you see the budget, or at least have a, a framework of the budget. The, both towns see a framework of the budget, and then the budget subcommittee will work with me and John to finalize that public hearing budget presentation, and then we, we should roll. But prior to the governor, governor's budget, or any release of, of where we are in February, we'll have a rough idea, we'll do some estimations, but they'll be pretty accurate estimations of what we're going to need, and what it's going to look like going forward. So prior to the first of the year, the school committee can see something, the boards of selectmen, we heard them last year, that they want something together, and they want it as early as possible. And, and we'll do that with their feedback.
With that January 11th meeting proposed date?
Yeah.
I don't want to, would that be all of us and all of them?
That would be, that would be a joint meeting of everyone.
Okay.
So you'd hear it again, but then it would be an open forum for, for those boards. And I present pretty much similar, maybe with some feedback or some tweaks from you folks after, after the presentation in December to give to them.
And I think one of the things you shared with us was your, obviously, there's benefits to everyone sharing and hearing all the same things together. But if either town felt strongly that maybe for scheduling purposes, they wanted to kind of have a Whitten night versus a Hanson night, then it might go into two.
We could do that too.
But, you know, again, it, it depends on what they want and what they're looking for, so.
The, the goal is to not present four or five towns.
Right, you know. Right, so, right, that would be, that would probably be the limit of the efficiency.
That's what I'm looking at. And I want to hear from them. So it's kind of giving them an opportunity to give me some feedback, and get this out before the public hearing, when we really start to dig down. So, can I move into new business?
Everyone's good.
New business good?
Why don't we do, yeah, you're going to go into the building project?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they're secure.
Yep, I know.
We can do the other stuff out.
So we have some folks here from AI3, and, and our, our OPM, Mr. Bates is here. So Troy and Julie are here from AI3. Very excited to talk to you guys about the Whitten Middle School project. We started this in 2018. We were approved by MSBA in December of 2019. Here we are in October of '22, and we haven't broken ground, anything like that, but there's been a lot of work on this project. So Troy and Julie are going to give you, you have a PowerPoint in front of you. Brandon and I are going to speak a little bit about our ed plan today, because the goal of this committee is to, to vote on our education plan, or a template of our plan moving forward. We met as a building committee last night and approved the 1,100-page document that was going to go to MSBA. And what was the other document, Fred, that we approved last night?
Oh, we eliminated.
No, we, yes.
So we, we voted to concentrate.
Yes.
On two particular ways of building the building. One was instead of having this two-story building, to have a three-story building. More economical footprint, more economical inside, and more economical to pay for.
And energy.
And more economical energy, and, you know, future costs as well.
And just letting the committee know today, anything that we vote isn't set in stone. Okay? This is just an overview, a template. This is not something that is, is, is done. That vote comes later on. So just, you get to see Troy and Julie, we've seen them quite a bit, and then hear a little bit from Brandon and myself. So, folks, take over.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon. Again, Troy, Randall, AI3 architects with me, Julia, Hilly, AI3 architects, also John Bates, product OPM from Colliers, here as well. We're going to go through the, as you can see with the agenda, we're going to give you a snapshot of the overall project schedule, and how what we're talking about tonight dovetails into that schedule. We're going to talk about the programming process, and the goals of the educational program, also the educational visioning process that we went through over the last several months. And then we'll turn it over to Superintendent Simonak on, in his team, to talk with, talk about the educational program highlights and contents. And then we'll go through the discussion about the vote. So starting the conversation, there are several steps that are made, that make up the initial portion of the project schedule. The PDP, the Proposed Design Program, is the first step. The second is the PSR, which is the Proposed Preliminary Schematic Report. That's, that's one of the modules from the MSBA's process. The second module in this first stage is the schematic design. So we are right now at the tail end of the PDP phase of project. We'll get into the details on that in just a moment. The next phase will include an additional review of this document that you're, we're talking about tonight, the educational program narrative. This is the draft, this is the first step in the process, which will be included as part of the PDP submission to the MSBA on August, on October 21st. The next phase, which will also include a revision to this document, a refinement of the program narrative, will be included as part of the next phase. That will, that will be part of the PSR submission at the first week in March of next year. What happens with this document moving into the next phase is the refinement of the program, and specifically, the 5'8", 6'8" grade configuration discussion, as well as auditorium, no auditorium discussion, as part of the MSBA's marriage or partnership with the district. The requirement of looking at 6'8" and 5'8" is part of the evaluation. So we'll be talking a lot about that in the upcoming months. Once, once we get to that point, the end of PSR, the beginning of March, we'll transition into schematic design. That's when a single project will be identified. So over the next several months, we'll be refining the approach, refining the, the aspects of the project to a single project moving through schematic design. And ultimately, a town meeting and ballot vote will occur the fall of next year, the fall of 2023. And that, upon approval, to proceed forward, the Phase 2 portion of the project will continue with design development, construction documents, bidding, and construction. And that, we can talk about it at a later date when we get to that, when we get to that point. So the, the contents of this first phase, the PDP Preliminary Design Program, includes a lot of investigation, a lot of analysis. All of our consultants, mechanical, electrical, fire protection, architectural, site survey, geotech, all of those professionals have been working on this aspect of the project and collecting data, collecting existing conditions, reviewing the building, reviewing the site, and developing a narrative for each of those aspects. And, the second piece to that is what we're talking about tonight, which is the educational programming, educational visioning. And then, that third piece is looking at alternative options. And if you attended or saw the building committee meeting last night, a series, or the last month's meeting, there were a series of approximately 11 overall options that were identified as part of this first phase. And the next phase, we'll go through and condense those options into a few options to consider. And then ultimately, as I mentioned, schematic design will be a single option. But tonight, we're gonna talk about the educational programming and visioning. These documents help inform, they're in narrative form, that help inform the program of the building, and also how we design the building from a spatial standpoint, and how it has developed relative to its interaction with the site. Three goals of the educational program. The first is documenting the existing educational program in narrative form. The second is defining the proposed educational activities. And that's informed by, Julie will go through in just a moment, the educational visioning process that occurred over the last several months. And she'll get into the details of that. That's a, that's a really exciting piece, piece of the puzzle, it's a lot of fun with that process. And then, ultimately, that information informs, as I mentioned, informs the design of the building, design of the site. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Julie.
Sure, as Troy said, you know, how do we know where to begin with deciding what the educational objectives, the needs, and the vision of the Whitman students and staff are? And I guess the short answer is, we ask them. So we held some visioning sessions, we talked to the middle schoolers, all grade levels, and we also met with 5th grade students at the elementary schools. And we just did some activities with them, they were running, they were talking, they were drawing. Ultimately, just to get a rundown of how do they envision their middle school experience. We really got a lot of positive feedback, particularly in regards to different types of learning spaces, spaces to foster those different types of learning. So, the students were looking for spaces that they could collaborate in small groups, but also to have these zones or nooks within classrooms for independent work. They were also looking for project-based learning labs, or innovation labs, or performance spaces, just to get more hands-on activities and to learn through technology. And then they were also looking for a space that sort of tapped into a lot of these sensory factors. So, I think there was discussion on sort of gaining back some social, emotional trust and everything in their spaces. So they were just looking for color, material, textures, a lot of natural daylight, sort of some of the things that just make the environment a little bit more pleasant. And then space to be able to go outside with something that came up a lot. And even like bridges or mezzanines where they could see what their peers were working on. So, we found the students to be very helpful, and then we did the same activities with the staff and the educators. And what we found were that there was a lot of overlap between the responses. So the staff members echoed a lot of what the students were looking for in terms of collaborative spaces, independent workspaces, support for social, emotional. And then also having space to sort of bring a whole grade level together, maybe in a lecture form, or to see a performance, to work on those skills as well. And then again, the outdoor learning and the natural light, and just being in a space where you can see outside was something that, I think that was probably sort of a top vision that all of the students and staff had. So we found that to be very helpful in informing the educational narrative that we'll be reviewing.
The one thing that I would say is, if you haven't seen adults run across the middle school library and jotting down ideas and thoughts, running back in, in a contest, it's pretty, it's pretty amusing. It was very funny. And it was very helpful, there's actually, there are actually studies done about physical activity and movement, and creative thought, and how that energizes people's creative juices. So, there's some science backed up, as educators, you guys probably already knew that anyway. So, one thing I also want to, that I, that I want to mention as part of the process, we will, and we talked about 5'8" versus 6'8", and also the auditorium, will likely be back with you in the next few months and talking through those topics in greater detail, and having a conversation about what that means for, for the, for the town, and for the, for you as a, as a school committee. Because ultimately, the school committee will vote on what is, what the building will, will include, whether we'll proceed with a 5'8" or 6'8" approach. And then, then that will be, that will inform and assist the, the building committee to make their, their process and recommendation as we move, move forward. So, with that, I just want to turn it over to Superintendent Simonak and his team. Thank you.
Any quick questions for Troy or Julie, 'cause they're gonna be here, we'll, we'll bounce back and forth, anything that, that you have a question on right now? So before I get going, and I'm gonna be brief on this slide, I just wanna thank Brandon Frost and Crystal Regan. Crystal's a teacher at Whitman Middle School. George, who has years and years of middle school experience, he's lived middle school in creating this, this narrative. I hope you had an opportunity to read it. It shows our desire on where we wanna be. One of the pieces, or one of the bits of feedback that I've received as superintendent from this committee is, Jeff, you're an educational leader with your team, tell us what you think is best for our kids. The educational narrative that we put forth, although it includes a 6'8", a 5'8", it, it sways one way, which we feel, we feel is in the best interest of our district moving forward. So if you see this slide here, this is what we worked on. We, we wanna create a school for our middle school kids in Whitman that they deserve, and new opportunities. We wanna do interdisciplinary, give them a space to do interdisciplinary work. We want them to be adaptable. Social, emotional, you've seen in my goals, collaboration for our teachers, things that the students don't have, or teachers have that in the building now, that we have an opportunity to create with them. Connections, innovation, working with architects now who are, who have done different buildings. AI3 did this building. We can create and foster new pathways for our middle school kids. I know we've talked about that with a, a, hey, robust related, this is our opportunity. Safe and secure, using outdoor community culture, school community, this is our opportunity. Brandon and Crystal have put it together in, how many pages, 76 pages? A little bit of history. Understand that we built this for both a 5'8", a 6'8", with or without an auditorium. And I know those are talking points within our community. It's something that the school committee can drive the education plan. And again, I hope you had an opportunity to read it. We did write it the way we think it should be written, but you can also draft it and make comments on this as we go. So Brandon, why don't you give some highlights of what, what we wrote down?
Yeah, sure. We, we spent a lot of time going through, you know, the forms, sorry, this is dropping on me. The forms of, you know, what previous schools have done, and Troy and Julie are really kind of helpful with kind of walking us through the process. And I say "we" 'cause Crystal, the 8th grade science teacher, worked a lot on this document with myself as well. So her and I really, you know, worked through this, you know, what does it look like, how do other schools do this? And we kind of followed this format for the module. And the base form, I know you guys have kind of seen it, so I'll just go through it quickly. The base form is to kind of go through these main headings and just kind of say, what's there? What's currently, what, what do we have? And what do we propose? What do we need in a new, you know, learning space? So in most of these headings, you will see that, current and proposed, and that's kind of where we went. Most of what you will see in the proposal, what we have written, are gonna use a lot of that same language that we went over. So collaborative spaces, movable, flexible seating. You know, rooms and spaces that we need for, you know, the special education needs and the EL population, all of those things that our current building doesn't have. You know, talk about collaborative spaces, we talked a lot in some of these aspects about there's no place for breakout rooms for kids to have group work, 'cause our hallways are deficient, and, and things of that nature. You know, I, I could highlight the Section H and J, you know, the lunch program and the performing arts. You know, currently our building can't really use the cafeteria, 'cause it's very noisy, and there's a lot of food prep that's in there. So, a lot of things can't even happen in there. And the performing arts section that we have, you know, is not really able to utilize that space. So, what, what do we need in a new space? You know, we took a lot of those things into account when going that. The same thing with physical education as well, in L. We, we talked a lot about the multipurpose room that we have already, and, you know, the community usage and the impact, and what we currently have, but what we would need in a new space. And how could we use some of the special education, you know, pieces that we actually need to use the physical education, you know, rooms for some of our sped population as well? 'Cause we're, you know, currently also unable to do that as well. You know, I'll highlight M, and, you know, the city program, esteem program, all of these wonderful related arts, you know, offerings that we have are running now. But, you know, city, for example, that you would read is, is in a room with no windows, and it's small, and it's, you know, so there's different things that we need. And again, you'll see on every single one of these, flexible, movable seedings, collaborative space, you know, which moves towards, you know, this 21st century learning and what our students need in Whitman, so.
And Brandon was able to pull that data from the teacher activities...
Yes.
From the student activities, and that's helping Troy and Julie build, build that.
Right.
So again, that, that piece of, it's not just our opinion, it's, it's opinions of the staff there, 'cause they live that environment. And it's, it's kids being able to say, this is what I want, and put that into the plan. Again, to desire to give them that opportunity that, that we all think they deserve in a new, in a new building, or ad rental. And the other piece too for the committee is, we have to submit a new building schematic, and by MSBA guidelines, an addition renovation. Even though that might be something we all don't want, MSBA requires that of, of us.
While they may require the submittal, it is ultimately our choice, what we do. We don't, we can, you know, and I think the cost estimates for an ad rental are more expensive than building a new, than building new, so. Something to keep in thought.
In time.
Any specific questions with the educational program that I can help you guys with in these 76 pages?
There's nice history in there.
Yeah, yeah.
If I could just also point out, you know, do wanna thank everybody, because I know you guys are weeding, weeding, meeting. It's past my bedtime, what can I say? You're meeting regularly every single week for lord knows how many weeks, Ms. Stafford. Thank you, you attended those meetings.
The subgroup as well.
You know, John Galvin from the Middle School Building Committee, he attended the meetings as well.
Correct.
You know, so thank all of you for your extra time and efforts, you know, in developing the plan.
Thank you.
So I know you said, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, if we're voting this document, I did wanna...
Yes.
Mention about, do you wanna chair a typo?
Sure, so, so John brought it to my attention. On page 11, and I mentioned it to Troy today, we weren't able to fix it. On page 11, there's an item where it talks about full-day kindergarten.
Yeah.
It's around the Conley and Duval Schools, it's early childhood education. That's the typo that we had to modify.
I do remember, I do remember working on that specific part, so yeah, I should, I missed that one.
And it was probably written before our district was offering full-day kindergarten?
Yeah.
I'll just read it, it's bottom of page 11, but it says, "A 5'8" grade model will provide space at the elementary school level for the full-day kindergarten program." So, because we already have it right now, we don't necessarily need that space for that program.
Yeah, that was supposed to be deleted, my fault.
Yeah.
We made the update today.
Oh, you did, okay.
For the expansion of early childhood education.
Yeah, and the master document is updated.
Okay.
So thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just wanna make sure we're voting based on that, so.
So, an emotion would be to vote the educational plan document, or to support the vote that the...
Support the narrative, right, Troy? We need to support the educational program narrative.
The vote, I just switched the slides on you. The vote is to approve the educational program narrative and include the document as part of the feasibility Preliminary Design Program, PDP, report to the MSBA for their consideration.
Why would we make that motion?
I'll, I'll second.
Got a couple seconds, that's great. And then in terms of discussion, 'cause I did, I just wanna make sure I'm following this correctly. If I understood, the building committee did support in favor...
Correct.
But was there, was there a modification where it was to exclude a couple things, or am I misunderstanding?
No.
Just the document as a whole?
Just the document's intention as a whole.
Correct, yes.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, I think it's important if we're gonna have a Subcommittee, that we understand what they're doing, and we rely on it.
And I still think that there's purviews and whatnot, but we can discuss that later. But no, it was a unanimous vote to vote the educational program narrative.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thanks Troy, thanks John. Probably talk to you tomorrow.
So, we can go, back up to regional agreement.
So...
Thanks Brandon.
Regional agreement update. So we had our last, in our last meeting, we created the regional agreement committee. And what I said in that meeting was, I would share with the Boards of Selectmen what we did. Again, kind of make sure we're all on the same page in terms of what we're doing. So I went to both the Hanson Select Board meeting last night, and the Whitman Board of Select, Whitman, man, the Select Board and the Select Committee. But I'm gonna get it right, that's how they did it in both towns. So the Hanson Board meeting and the Whitman Board meeting last night. And all I really wanted to do with both of them was share what we had done, and then ask them about feedback and timing. Right, 'cause timing was the other question, how, how quickly do we get this done? So I shared that we had voted six voting members, which was comprised of the two school committee members. I shared that that would be Chris and myself, a total of two Board of Selectmen, one from each town, two town administrators, and then for non-voting, we had two citizens at large, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and business man. That's what we had voted, and I asked for their feedback. So in...
And finance committee members?
I'm sorry, thank you, yes, right here. And two finance committee members, one from each town, sorry.
All right, you got it.
I was running out of paper, but thank you for clarifying.
So citizens too?
Two, one citizen from each town, two citizens, that's what we had voted up to support.
Yes, we did.
And so in Hanson, there was discussion about the town administrators as voting members. And I'm, actually, I'm gonna give you the summaries, 'cause then you can both, you can watch both of them. So there was consensus across both boards, that the town administrators really follow the lead of the various boards. So it seemed not relevant to have them be voting members, because, you know, it's not like the town administrators are not gonna support what the select board member is going to do, or the selectman's going to do. And there was also a conflict in Hanson, where Lisa is representing Hanson, but also lives in Whitman, so she would've had to probably recuse herself. So there would seem to be consensus. What I got was, hey, could we make them non-voting members? That was one takeaway. There was also discussion about the citizens at large. And the point of that was, again, kind of had the discussion, but it was really around, look, if there are gonna be open meetings and public meetings, you know, do we really need to go through a selection process and identify someone? When at this point, we're encouraging anyone that wants to attend, and as a non-voting member, what's the difference between kind of a non-voting member citizen at large, and a citizen that wants to speak, because we would encourage them to attend and speak? So that was feedback point number two. And then it was interesting, in Hanson, there was discussion that they really wanted two members of the select board as representatives. It all worked itself out. And so, that was the discussion, and then they went to vote, and the only person that really thought it made sense in terms of timing was Mr. Hickey. So they kind of ended up with one, and then they kind of regrouped and said, you know what? If Whitman's good with one, we'll just do one, let us know. So I went to Whitman, explained it, they had some discussion. Both towns kind of view this, and I kind of explained what I thought our charge was as, these are representatives of the respective boards. Right, so if Chris and I are in this meeting, we're gonna have an executive session in advance, and we're gonna understand, what do you all want? Our job is to represent that. Same with the Boards of Selectmen, right? Whoever that representative is, if they're not there to say, this is what I think, they should be there to bring the thoughts of, this is what the board thinks for Whitman, this is what the board thinks for Hanson, report back, and so on and so forth. And so after that discussion, in Whitman, they kind of also agreed, one made sense. And I guess I learned, I actually got a, I got a note from Laurie, Laurie, Laurie O'Brien, that they named Justin Evans as their representative. So presently, we have four voting members that have been assigned. What I guess I would ask the committee to consider is modifying our committee to perhaps remove the two citizens at large, again encouraging citizens to participate, and also changing the two town administrators from voting members to non-voting.
I gladly make that motion if you're seeking it.
Second?
And then we'll do a discussion, Chris.
Did you mention FinCom? I know you...
One FinCom member from each town, and the other thing, just, so I don't, I'll say this now, so I don't forget about it. So I reached out to the Board of Selectmen to make sure that, and the Select Board to make sure that they were, okay, if we approve this tonight, the last piece is to reach out to the two finance committees and ask them, hey, who's your representative? They have to figure that out. I think Whitman may have already done that, if I understand correctly, from Ms. Okina. But we need to figure out who those folks are, 'cause then we can get our party started and go from there. But yes, it would be one finance committee member from each town as a representative.
Thank you.
And then the only other thing, I'm looking at my notes here, I had a very fancy note-taking device last night. In Hanson, Laura did suggest maybe thinking about a mediator, to kind of massage some of the pieces that need to be there. I think what I suggested was, you know, I think we gotta get the group together first. first, find out what's important to everyone, what are those things, and then go from there. So I think it, I think it was a good idea, but I think it may be premature. But I think that's, that was, those were my takeaways that I wanted to make sure I shared with the committee before we. So motions on the table. We have a second?
Can you just go back over what we would like? At our last meeting, we voted on what we thought the committee should be.
Yes.
So what is it after meeting that can you just retest?
So what would it look like if this vote was to pass?
Yes, yes, yes.
We would have two school committee members, one from each town, which would be Chris and myself. We would have a select board, Board of Selectmen, one from each town, which would be Jim Hickey from Hanson and Justin Evans from Whitman. And those would be the four voting members. And then in addition, we would have non-voting members that would include both town administrators, a finance committee member from each town, which I believe in Whitman is already Ms. Okina, and then the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and business manager. And they would all be public, open, posted meetings.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, we can move to vote. All right. All those in favor? Fantastic. Okay. So the next thing in terms of timing is we'll probably try and get something, I think getting, so I'll get something out to the finance committees to make sure that they identify who's going to be the representative, at least in Hanson. I'll do it formally in Whitman just because, but it sounds like that's uncovered. And then I think we're going to probably try and meet sometime over the next few weeks. At least to have an initial meeting, kind of start to get that going. Yes.
Are we going to do an executive session first?
Yeah, good point. So we may have to do it. So maybe we'll try and schedule it soon after our school committee meeting, or we're going to have to have a school committee meeting in advance. So, or maybe not. Fred, I think, look, so I think if we have the first meeting to just go through ground rules, like this is what we're going to do, maybe go have the executive session, make sure everyone gets together, just like the logistics, we're going to meet on this night at this time, like that type of thing. So maybe we'll have a quick initial meeting. But yeah, we're not going to start anything in earnest until we.
Have we taken the document that we had before and sent it to an attorney or Mars perhaps for review to see if anything needs to be updated legal-wise?
Could do that.
And maybe say, you know, we want to take this and use it as a framework and then we can go from there. At least you have a good starting point.
Yep. I think these are all things. So I think we can get that meeting together sooner rather than later. And then these are the things that I think we need to talk about as that group, make sure everyone's on the same page. And I'm jotting that one down. That's a great idea. Maybe we're going to engage Mars. Are we all good with that? And, you know, if we are going to engage them, maybe we can have them look at the document. So I think it's just important before we get too far ahead of ourselves, just get everyone together.
Say hello.
Look, and I was, I did say, as I left the Whitman meeting, I was encouraged with the dialogue and conversations in both towns, right? Because it was interesting, like I went from one and then walked right into the other. And so, you know, I think we're in an okay spot. Like hopefully now we can come together and move this forward. It's been, we've been talking about doing this for.
Two years.
Years. So like.
2019.
Yeah, I'm a person that likes actions speak louder than words, but just getting everyone together for a quick meeting, like to me, that's a good step. We've been talking about this thing for years. So this will be good. So thank you for that. What is next?
You want to go M.A.C. or can I get Gideon out of here?
Yes, let's do that, please.
Capital warrant? So Gid, why don't you jump up? So you have a document here, the budget, the operations and capital committee supported unanimously. But I'm letting Gideon just speak briefly to the three items that we have to up for approval as capital items to the town of Whitman and the town of Hanson. As you know, the town of Whitman, look for an October date for a capital. Got that extension from the interim town administrator. So Gideon's here to just present the three technology capital items, which are relatively expensive. And again, approved unanimously by the operations and capital committee tonight. Gid?
Is that in the drive? Did they, they might not, did they get that?
I don't know, Michelle, I thought we had one of each on the table. No.
Can we have a copy of this one?
It's in the packet, right?
Yes.
It's in the packet. The drive on the capital matrix, it says with technology priorities. I believe it's the second.
So it's not on the school committee? It's on the packet? Here, grab it. Is that right? Here you go.
Yeah, you want to.
Let me find it.
I'll listen.
Anybody else?
Nope. Everyone's good?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Hard away. Thank you.
Okay, so these are really all priorities, but we had to put them in some, some kind of logical order. So numbers one, two, and three going down the list. So number one would be network switches. We have 97 that we've counted, network switches that would need to be replaced. The current ones are at end of life. They are taking no more firmware updates and we are not being supported on them because they're so old.
Vanna White is a, that's a network switch.
It's a network switch.
Oh.
I needed these to be questioned.
So anything that has an internet wire connected to it would feed back to one of those in our network closets. And then that, that switch would then go out to the, to the internet. That's a 48 port switch. And each of those ports that you can plug an internet wire or cable into has different rules for it. So to set these up and to configure them and to then tell the ports where to go is extremely granular, time-producing feat. So this is, this is, this is a ton of work. So we would need to bring in some people to help us with this. So you can't take that offline or the, you know, a part of the building goes down or the phones go down or the computer lab goes down. You have to do that at off-hours or during school vacations. So without network switches, the other things that I have on here don't function. In fact, nothing functions. So the network switches are the number one priority. The next priority would be to upgrade our servers and our backup storage. This is kind of, we gave, we gave a $675,000 figure here. This could and most likely will change because I would love to streamline as much as I possibly can. If we can configure servers to store more than one platform or, or, you know, any kind of storage really that we can streamline and house together, we would do that. So this number could definitely change, but those are all at end of life as well. Okay? The third priority, this doesn't say the number, but this would be the quote for this interactive border here that Mr. Farrell's bringing over. This is the TouchView interactive panel. This is provided by the Oakers Company, which is on the state contract list. They are right here in Massachusetts. They actually own TouchView, which is what was its own separate company over in China. They went over, bought it. They have this, these boards in stock. These are the ones I used in North Attleboro. We had very, very good experience with them. This quote here would be for 245 panels. The current panels you have, and I'll be blunt, are junk. They are, some of them are 2004 and in a couple of years beyond that. It's like having an old clunker car. It'll get you from A to B, but it's not a great experience. We are having some problems with newer technologies connecting to them. They've just run their course. They simply have. The other point that, that we brought up in subcommittee was that most of our boards are, have a projector connected to them. When those projector bulbs go, they're about $300 to $400 a pop for the bulb replacement. You know, we need reminders to turn the boards off when they're not in use. So the more hours you have of them, the hotter they get, the faster the bulbs go. So, you know, we have obviously some in stock, but that's a very costly, a costly thing to replace. The panel is like your flat screen TV. It's going to go for as long as you take care of it. It's probably got a 20-year, you know, lifespan to it. The technology will obviously advance by then, but it's going to be a lot more efficient than, than a projector bulb. So if we want to give our, our students a good experience on the internet, for lack of a better phrase, and we need the switches to provide the internet, we need the servers to back up the things that they're producing on the internet, and so obviously some internal things that we would need to back up, and we need the boards to connect to their, to whatever they want to connect to it. They can connect their desktop computer to it. They can connect a laptop to it. We would go with a CART model for the elementary level. I had good experiences with that in my former district as well. And we would mount the middle school and the high school boards because that's kind of a traditional way that, that we would, we would portray those. So those are the, I have lots of priorities. Those are the three that we have here today before you. I thank the subcommittee for passing them on. And I'll answer any questions if you have them.
So just a couple. So is the quote, the cost quotes here, and so forgive me if you guys already went through this in the subcommittee, apologies for not getting here early enough to listen in, but the quotes here, are those just equipment or are those equipment and labor to implement?
Equipment and labor.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. So, yeah, I didn't want, because I was looking at, wait a second, like that switch costs.
Yeah, it's a lot of money.
Yep, so.
Configuration, that's the patch cables, that's the programming, that's the.
So I think it's going to be really important because we have the internet and I can just picture sitting in town meeting and someone going on Amazon like I just did and be like, wait a second, right? So can we just make sure we clarify when it's presented that there should be equipment and labor?
Yeah, subcommittee recommended that, and that's something that we'll definitely break out.
Okay. And then how many servers? Do you know?
I don't know right now, Mr. Chairman, because again, we, they all died.
Okay.
So we've, we've got some that are virtual and we have some that are physical machines here on site. But we're thinking that we can combine platforms onto one server if it's, if it's big enough, right? So that number is really TBD.
And are you doing any type of like bid process on some of this stuff in terms of like where we're going to go to get it or not really?
This is from custom computers, yeah, who are on the state bid list and they're obviously our partner with the rebuild. And I know that they, they presented to the school committee a few years back. It's certainly something we can, we can.
Not maybe for the labor, but I'm just thinking like equipment, if you're going to buy in something like of this size and bulk, maybe they.
Sure. Yeah, we should get the best price, absolutely. Oakers, for the interactive boards, I did get two, I did get a couple vendors. I had the Oakers TouchView panels, quote me, and I had Viewsonic, which we have some of those rolling around in the district right now. The Viewsonic came in a little bit more expensive than the, than the TouchView. So obviously, we want to use our money wisely and get the best bang for a buck, so.
Great. Any other questions, anyone else? Sorry, it's a lot of money I wanted to ask.
Well, another, just a comment. George, you want to talk about the possibility of grants that you're looking into too?
So there are also, we talked about this role of priorities. We've also talked about mobile insurance cover and some issues like the servers. So that's out there, we're not sure. We also have what's called E-Rate. E-Rate is the federal funding mechanism that allows you to get different categories of connectivity devices. We could also use some of that. There is also the third thing that has been sent out from Governor that says that all of these security grants are coming out and, but nothing has yet come to us. So when you put these things together, we've learned a few years ago with the subcommittee and then we've learned with the capital committees in this town, is that the money doesn't actually come from them until the work is done and the things are purchased. So what we've decided and we've cleared up with both towns is that this is the apex amount, not to exceed. However, when the things come to fruition, if you get a grant, if you get a price on something, if something comes through, that would be low. So what we're asking for is because it's October and this is not till a springtime piece, we've learned and we're asking, and the committee went with it earlier tonight, to put what we believe is the apex amount so that we can then see what develops in the next six months and go from there. I would just say that last year, we didn't have the roads at this time, but the winter decided that for us, that we needed to replace the roads. So while we're trying to be able, that's sort of the task we take.
Any other discussion?
I think I would just add, just like the athletic uniforms, like this shows our true budget. This is the cost of running a school, you know, and this is, and we knew this two years ago. We did our, our due diligence, had custom computers in, so this was on our radar, big price, but.
And I think the superintendent can speak to this. I think we, and we've been discussing this amongst ourselves, is since this crisis, we've noticed just how many systems rely on a solid network infrastructure. We can have as many shiny, brand-new Chromebooks as we want, but if they don't connect to the network, we're getting nowhere. So building the infrastructure and the foundation is so important. Unfortunately, it's very expensive. So we'll continue to look for funding sources and we appreciate your support on these priorities, but we do need to rebuild it or it's, it's just not going to stand up.
Thank you.
Move to the vote. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gideon.
Okay. Where are we now? A resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's, you are just.
Yes.
So the conference is coming up in a few weeks.
Yeah.
And so Beth will be voting on our behalf. So in terms of what we do here is we do try and go through them so that we can arm Beth with.
Right. And I can give like summary points and stuff on it because I was in on a Zoom meeting where they went through all the six of the resolutions and the whys and wherefore's and whatever. One of the things before we start, what everybody needs to remember is this is not just something that affects us, it affects other districts too. So it might not be something that affects just us directly, but it affects, you know, our colleagues elsewhere. So that, keep that in mind when you look at things. And also, you have, you have to decide how much latitude you want to give me and a vote like if there's amendments to these resolutions on the floor. They will be held on the Monday, I mean, on the Wednesday, the first day of the conference at 3:00. So the first one is, and they also, the easiest way to look at these is to look at therefore it be resolved. That is what you're kind of voting on. So they, whereas, whereas, if you look at the therefore it be resolved, that really kind of sums it, okay? So the first one is regarding sanctuary laws, the laws for transgender students. And it's, what this does is codify in the rights and that we, it'd be a sanctuary for children from other states who come in to our state that maybe did not have these rights. So that is, and it said, I don't have to read it, you guys can read it, but says, enjoy the, enjoy the safety and tranquility in the building. So you want to do these one at a time for a vote so I'll know how. So you want to do these one at a time for a vote, so I'll know how to vote on each of these?
Yeah, so why don't we get, why don't we get, we'll just do motion to support, and then obviously, if we vote in the negative, it won't be to support.
Yeah.
Can we get a motion to support resolution one?
So move.
Second.
Okay, so Beth, thank you for your overview. Questions, comments on that one? I guess, so as I, so most of these were pretty straightforward to me, as I read this one, what I was trying to figure out was, because I read this one, like, four times, right? So I read the 2011 Act relative to protecting gender identity, which exists. And then I saw something, and then if I read it correctly, it was, this is an issue in other states, but not in Massachusetts, but, so I'm trying to figure out, why does this need to be done?
All right, so one of these, if you have been listening to the news, there was a woman from, woman from Worcester, I think it was, the Worcester one, and this is one of the reasons they did it, who sent bomb threats to Children's Hospital in regards to supposedly transgendered children, that they were doing surgery there on them, and sending them bomb threats, so that it would codify that, you know, we'll take care of any children as we need to, whether they're from out of state or in our state. That's, basically, that's what a lot of that came about, I think, is because of that. That's what was one of the points that they brought about. Yes, we take care of our own, but also to beware of the children who come into this state for medical reasons, that they might go to Children's Hospital, or, you know, Mass General, for different, not necessarily gender change, but just that they need, you know, some people just don't want them helped at all, so.
Fred.
I don't understand why they need a resolution for that. I mean, you know, you seek an opinion at a hospital, you go to a hospital, okay, if it's across state lines, I mean, it's not an issue here. I don't know why this has to exist.
It's to protect from prosecution, so in Arkansas, families cannot seek care for students, for their children who might be transgender, and it's not, like I said to someone I work with today, no child in America walks into a hospital and says, I want to be the opposite sex, right? It is a huge process, and those of us who work with kids know this, because we have these students in our buildings. It's to protect from prosecution. So if a student from Arkansas were to come to Boston Children's Hospital, which has one of the best facilities for transgender care, whether it's counseling, whether it's surgeries, it's to protect that family from not being prosecuted over state lines. So Texas, you can't receive care like this, Arkansas, you can't receive care like this. In Texas, parents can be prosecuted for putting their children in these places, so if they decide that they want to come to Massachusetts to get this, it protects them, and it protects us. I think the way that I read it is, it protects the school committees from passing policies, per se, to put things in to not cover that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and also, one of the quotes that was important, it says, if it's out there, it's in here. So, you know, that if there's controversies out there, it's in here, too. So that's, that's the best way I can explain it.
I just don't understand, I'm not a lawyer, but if...
No, Fred, I hear you, I was struggling, I think Hillary's explanation helps me understand that if, you know, it's as good as anything I've read here, if it's a situation where a certain state says something, and then you come to Massachusetts where something's allowed, but now it's going to be a problem, if this is to strengthen that, you know, if Massachusetts decides that this is okay, then Massachusetts, then you should be allowed to do...
And other states have said that they could prosecute the state of Massachusetts, or the doctors in Massachusetts, or the, you know, the state, too, so that...
Although if that's the case, this is going to be a federal issue, or they're just...
That, which might be.
Right, but I think it's, I think, I think overall, a lot of these are showing support to our students and our students' families.
Yeah.
Right, I think that, at the bottom line, that's what it is.
That's what it is.
You know, and as someone who's in a high school with a lot of transgender students, and students going through these things, I can say that, like, you know, they, those families and those students value things like this.
Okay, so most of these, like I said, I think, I'm going to speak for myself, I had a pretty good sense of which way I wanted to vote, that was one I had a question, so I wanted to have some conversation, I would maybe encourage everyone to do the same, so if everyone knows how they want to vote, then we can move to vote. Is there anyone else that has anything they want here, or everyone knows what they want to do? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. So on resolution one, all those in favor of supporting, all of those against, and abstaining. Okay, so seven, two. Okay, there you go.
Beth, did we need to talk on each one about latitude of amendments, too? You can't predict what an amendment is, but you brought that up.
Yeah, well, that's what they said, that I should have that conversation, is, like, will you, from our conversation here, does that give me the latitude if there's an amendment?
I guess.
That's, do you trust me?
Okay. I guess we trust you.
Yeah, no, I think we definitely, I think it's just, it's weird.
I don't know that there's going to be an amendment on that one.
It just kind of defeats our process.
Yeah, not on that one, it won't be an amendment.
Well, yeah, and, but a lot of school committees, a lot of people say that their school committee aren't even voting on it, they just tell the person to go vote.
That's what we used to do, and then I think we had a conversation about, like, this doesn't make sense, like, I can't remember, like, I went to a conference, I'm like, wait a second, like, what am I supposed to do here?
I don't anticipate, I don't think there's going to be one on this one, I don't think there's any amendment.
Chris had something.
I was just going to say, I think, A, you know, we have a representative that we obviously trust, but beyond that, to have this conversation, for Beth to get the feeling and the gist of what this committee wants, you know, I feel very confident that if there is an amendment, whatever Beth votes will be in alignment with what we've talked about, right? It's like, it's...
And if it's too far away from what we've talked about, then I'm not going to vote for the amendment.
I think, and I think that's, I think, so I think, is everyone good giving you the discretion, and just let us know? So if, for example, and I think if you're, if it's one where you're stuck, and you're like, man, I have no idea, you can picture all of our, you know, all of us being like, I don't, then I think you just have to abstain, and say, you know, this is, or maybe before they even put the amendment out, you could say, like, hey, if we vote on this amendment, just so you know, we discussed this in school committee, I'm going to be at a point where we're going to have, you're going to abstain.
Absolutely, I don't have a problem with that.
Because I'm sure other people would, too, I don't know if they're thinking of it that way. It shouldn't just be one member of every school committee just goes and has, you know, we all agree on one thing, it's written, there's a reason, there's written, and there's a reason we're taking the time tonight to go through this.
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
So the next one is about increasing the max bounds allowed by special ed reserve fund, which we really don't have here, but other places do. And they're only allowed to put, to, they want to be able to increase from 2% to 5%. Like I said, some of these really don't affect us, but they could, because where it's a regional, both towns would have to agree to put a certain amount of money in to a sped reserve fund, and a specific amount. The towns, on their own, have their own reserve fund, as you know, and this would be a special one that two, the two towns would vote on, and to increase the amount. So obviously, there are some districts that have this, and they have a reserve fund, they just want to be able to put more money into it, because the sped budgets are increasing so much.
And so to clarify, this doesn't mean we're doing it, it simply means that the mechanism, they're trying to create a mechanism to allow it to...
Yes.
They're actually looking to change, amend Chapter 40, Section 13E, to increase it from 2% to 5%. And I'll make the motion to do so, or to support the resolution.
Motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Yes, Steve.
Yeah, so the Plimpton School Committee, and I don't know if he still serves, but he's been quite the mastermind when he was with the Pilgrim Area Collaborative early on, Jason Frazier, and I know he participated at a lot of Mass things, and he will go tooth and nail to help anyone with anything to do with special needs, with the funding and whatnot. And I know Pilgrim Area, we got our final numbers together with our first meeting this month, we're up over $60,000, $65,000, and we're usually one of the lower ones. So increasing this and having that capability for districts would be a good choice.
Good, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, great, all right.
Yeah, no, they're not all here.
No, they're, they're double-sided, so it's on the...
Mine isn't double-sided.
No, mine's not double-sided.
Mine isn't double-sided.
It's on the drive.
Yeah, no, I know what it is, I wrote everything down, so, in general. So number three is about membership of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Ed. I didn't know this, but it is prohibited from an educator or a school committee member to be on the board. Now, it's the Board of Education. I'm sorry, but I just couldn't even believe that one myself, but I think there's no real explanation needed, that the resolution is to remove that prohibition, to allow somebody in education to be on the Board of Education. So that's...
Any additional discussion on that? The thing that's really interesting is, if you go on the DESI website, and you see where they're from, there also isn't a very big geographic diversity, it's like Boston and surrounding.
Boston, Boston, Boston.
Boston West, which, again, so to your point, yeah, there's probably a lot of work that can be done in terms of thinking about a more diverse group, believe it that, but okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All right, so that's an example where, you know, if you had an amendment to make it even stronger, you'd probably feel pretty comfortable.
Yeah, the second one does not have to do with us, but it has to have to do with preserving local governance of mass schools. These are the schools that were put into receivership by the state. The problem is, there was no end to this in sight, there was no ending. If you get to this point, you're out of receivership, there is no end. So this resolution is to put a pathway to how it can end, and to be able to say, at this point, you should be out of receivership, because, you know, they were put in receivership because of certain issues. So if those issues are resolved, can the receivership end? And there's no, and so they really want these receiverships to end by next year, so.
I remember hearing this before, and it means they, they don't have a working school committee who can hear from their constituents and speak at the table, so yeah, the people, the residents, the parents in town, so I support this.
And these schools aren't doing that, since they've been under receivership either.
No, because the people who are, the receivership aren't doing, don't know what they're doing.
Right, I'll make a motion to support Resolution Four.
Second. Any additional discussion? Okay, well, move to vote, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Okay, so this one, there was a lot of discussion on, believe it or not.
Five?
What?
No, only because, and I'll tell you what the opposite opinion was, okay, personal finance literacy be put in. Now, isn't the state requiring this, though, too?
Yeah.
I thought I heard the state, but anyway...
It's a legislative amendment, yeah.
The argument against it was that it was an overreach of the government, to tell schools what they should be teaching.
Oh.
So, I mean, that was the argument against, but I'm just saying, you know, we know the reason for, we're having it here, it's a requirement for graduation, so I think I know what our vote is, but, you know, if it's a requirement here, we can't really vote it.
But did they...
Fred's eager on this one.
Yeah.
Isn't having financial literacy as important as reading and writing, and arithmetic?
Yeah.
I mean, come on!
I know.
I'd like to make the motion to support Resolution Number Five.
Make it stronger.
I mean, that is just...
Okay, we have a motion, or we have a second, I'm not sure, there's a lot of...
I just have a question for Beth about the discussion, it's okay.
Yeah.
Did they, I mean, I under, I understand that argument, I don't know that I agree with it, because, did anyone say how, how this is different than saying students need four years of English to graduate from high school, or?
No, they, the people who were talking were not speaking for themselves, they were speaking, saying that some people had said it was government overreach, but because that, and what is the difference, like Fred said, between those?
I just, right, okay.
I didn't get that either, but that was just some of the arguments that I might hear.
And I would hope that the government would never, ever, ever overstep its bounds.
All right, we'll move to the vote on that one, all those in favor? Unanimous, okay.
Okay, I liked this one. By the way, there's a, it should be 3.5%, not 35%.
Yeah.
In fact, the guy who ran...
Well, it says 3.5%, but up there it is.
And the guy who was running this says, I put this in, so he was quite embarrassed that it was incorrect, and so obviously, they didn't correct it right away. So what this is, is establishment of a regional school assessment reserve fund, so this does affect us all, could. What this does is controlled by municipal funds, and it would help on years that our assessment is huge. We had one year where we didn't have an increase in assessment, so a year like that, that the two towns could agree to put into a reserve fund extra money, to take care of and help on a year that the assessment was huge, that's what this does. And it would be controlled, you know, by the two towns, not by the school, it would be controlled by the two towns, but they would have this ability to have a reserve fund. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a Chapter 40, Section 13F, but they want to be able to recreate, and increase it, and from what it is, so.
Oh, not 35%?
No, it's 3.45, yeah, 3.45.
I'll make a motion to support Resolution Six.
Second. Fred.
The only, the biggest fear I have on something like that is, let's say you do put away a little bit of dough, it's one-time money, and it's going to an operating budget that's recurring, you're encouraging a bad practice.
Yeah, and again, I mean, I think this is, I think there's a difference between, right, and I hear what you're saying.
I don't see our towns doing it at all.
Right, there's a difference between having a mechanism, and then us doing it.
But that's why I have to say, you have to think about the big picture of all of the plays, but...
It's encouraging a bad practice.
15 towns.
Right.
I know, other regions have fluctuation.
Yeah, it's up to you guys.
Any other discussion? Okay, move to vote, all those in favor? All right, those against?
I can't just...
So hopefully the votes will give you a little bit of a read, too, the ones that were...
Yeah, yeah, if there's any question, okay, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Beth.
But yes, good luck, and thank you for doing that, and thank you for preparing those.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Can I just ask, who's going to the conference?
Me.
I'm still a maybe.
David may be going on a Saturday.
Yeah, I might be going on Saturday.
I'm going on Saturday. I actually emailed Jim Hardy, I said, is there a one day, because I can't get out of work for all the days, but Saturday interests me?
I think so. Well, I don't know, I might have to pay the whole thing.
He's like, I checked with Glenn, you could just pop in.
Okay.
Much appreciated.
Okay, we'll be down there.
Yep.
I was not going to pay for all, maybe, just Saturday.
Let us know, speak now, I don't know, I gotta see what's soft.
I have to, like, make my own badge at home, or something, send me a photocopy of the badge.
I'll flip mine around. All right, so now, we'll stay on the realm of legislative stuff, so state ballot question one. So, yeah, so I put this on the agenda because there was a press from a citizen, as well as a school committee member, to vote a resolution. So for me, right, one of the few things as chair is, you get to put things on the agenda or not, that's pretty much it. For me, you know, as I thought about this one, I struggled a little bit, because I know everyone at this table is a strong supporter of education, or you wouldn't be sitting here on a Wednesday night at 9:00 doing this. But I also think, I struggled a little bit with the role of our school, with the role of a school committee in terms of ballot question or politics, and whether or not that really belongs here. So, you know, I certainly have personal opinions on the ballot question, if anyone wants to, if anyone is still watching, and they want to give me an email and say, hey, I'm interested, I'm happy to give them, but I'm just really not sure, I don't feel comfortable doing that here, because I just don't think that that's the charge of the school committee. But I didn't want to exercise my personal opinions and not put it on the agenda, so that's kind of where we left it, so I'm going to leave it as, you know, this is something that we can not talk about, or we can talk about, and...
Do I have to make a motion to pass over?
Second.
Can we discuss that? I've forgotten, wrong with rules of order, if that's a discussable motion.
Let's look it up. I might have the card on me.
Do you have the card?
I think I do.
You've got the book.
Can we discuss? I should have looked at that, I should, but I think, can we do that?
I thought I was saying, I think.
Uh, I'm looking for a passover.
I don't, I'm thinking of a town meeting, we pass over something, do we discuss it?
What, do you, like, motion at the table, would it be considered that, passable?
Well, does anyone have any issue if we do have a little bit of discussion on the motion? Anyone opposed to that?
I would, I have discussion, since I made the request.
Rejoining to the motion.
Yeah, everyone's okay with that, I mean, I don't want to get in parliamentary jail here for...
I move to a vote, and then we'll...
Well, if we vote no, then there won't be any...
No, but if we're voting no for discussion or not, I...
Oh, no, 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 I'm saying, let's have some discussion, is everyone okay with that?
I thought he was going to pass over with...
His motion is to pass over.
That's what I'm saying.
Which is his motion, but are we okay having a little bit of discussion here before we vote to pass over, is everyone okay with that, Fred? Okay, that's, that's the one thing I didn't want, so yes, discussion, who, yes, you did just go right ahead.
If I may, I submitted this in resolution, and I believe it is worthy of our vote, because it does directly impact our schools. It is an educated, education ballot question. Other towns have voted, supported it, there are endorsements from MTA, Mass Association of School Committees, super, school, superintendents. So my belief is that this is, this tax is not a punishment on people or businesses, it's a benefit for all of us in the Commonwealth. So that includes our children in this district. So I would say the legislation does say that it's subject to appropriation, so some say there's no guarantee this money will go to schools. Remember, it is constitutionally protected, though, so same as our regional school transportation money, subject to appropriation, that's what this ballot question would be also, so you can vote yes, subject to appropriation. That's where our job as elected officials comes in, we work with our senators, our legislators, our representatives, to advocate for this continued funding of this ballot question one, should it pass? Same as the regional transportation, 10 years ago, it was 58, 60%. There's been enormous advocacy over the past four to five years, we've seen that go up to 90% grassroots advocacy, and that's what can happen, and when we have a ballot question like this. So I'm disappointed there's a motion to pass over, because I had a motion ready to vote on this, I think it's important, we could have expressed that.
Okay, I had Fred, and then Chris, and then Steve. I had Fred, and then Chris, and then Steve.
Couple of points, and I don't really feel it's the purview of our committee, you know, for this. Yes, it does say education. It also says roads and transportation. The money could get sucked up by the T. It could get sucked up by higher education because the words "higher education" are in there. There's no guarantee that that money comes back to us. And yes, it does affect a lot of different people. It may affect the person that works all their life, that sells their business, and did okay selling their business, but now they have to pay an awful lot more money in a tax. Okay, where Massachusetts has a flat tax. They call it fair share. If everyone's paying the same percentage, then how is that not fair? And by the way, you do have a school committee member sitting here, and this won't affect me because I sold my business and it's FY22, and this wouldn't go into effect yet. But if this did pass, it would cost me a substantial amount of additional funds. It hurts. That's the money I have to live on for the rest of my life because I sold my business. It's not a fair amendment. Getting aside of that, there's no guarantees, as I said. It affects small business. Small businesses are struggling out there. You talk to people that own companies and own little businesses. It's not easy today. It's hard, and it just, it's not fair. You know, you're writing a check. If you make a million dollars, you're writing a check for $50,000 to the Commonwealth of Mass at 5%. It's a pretty good check to have to write. And I'm going to shut up now. Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, so I'm...
And I will... You're Brandon, right? I'll get to you.
There's a motion on...
Yeah, yeah, no, I know. You sat here the whole time. Don't worry.
First of all, if I could clarify that motion to pass over, I was under the impression that if we voted no to not pass over...
Then you have your discussion.
Then we'd have a discussion.
That's how it is.
That's what I was saying. We could move to the vote and do that. So I'm...
We're having our discussion.
Right, that's fine.
I think those that want to discuss it are going to discuss it, and so we'll get there anyways.
I don't mind telling, you know, anyone that wants to listen that I'll be voting for this personally, but I do share your concerns about the role of the committee on something like this because I think about precedent, and I think about the vagaries of the language of the resolution. And I remember being a kid and looking at town elections and school committee, and it was apolitical. That's changed, and I don't think for the better. I don't like the idea of one group standing on one side of the street and the other side of the street. So, you know, along those lines, there are my reservations for supporting this. But again, personally, yeah, we should... I will vote to support this, but I don't know that it's the role of the school committee to do that.
Okay, so is there anyone else that wants to weigh in? I don't want to go more than once, but I think... So we're going to get our question one debate anyways, but that's okay. So I got Hillary.
You had me after Chris.
Steve, sorry, Steve, and then...
Hillary.
All right, I'm jotting them down. Yes, Fred, Chris, Steve, Hillary. Go ahead. Sorry, Chris.
So this was found by the Superior Court, Supreme Court, whatever court in Massachusetts, unconstitutional. We're targeting a group, and we're ten people that sit here. I know Glenn's not here this evening, but I always include him, that fight for equity. This is... This can affect all of our neighbors. It doesn't have to be Mr. Small, who was a small business owner until 2022. It can affect any of us. We have five, six, seven, eight thousand dollar houses in value, and that's why I don't like to do this political exchange. We should be fighting for kids, absolutely, but we should be fighting also a little bit for the equity of people. It was already voted, I think this six times, it was voted down to go up and twice to go down. And this is since 1962 or something, on these type of proposals. I'm being very broad, Data, and I don't like to do that. I like to be a little bit more eloquent and resourceful, but, you know, it's not for here. And that's why it's a ballot question. Let the people decide. They really feel that way.
Hillary?
I have to piggyback what Chris was saying. I was just looking because I know that Justin Evans wrote in the Whitman-Hanson Express, and he pointed out how many people in both towns this would affect.
Five or less.
Four or five, I think. I'm with Chris. Like, I will publicly say that I am in favor for this. However, I also think, and it's really important to me, that as a member of a committee, we don't make political decisions. And I do see this as dipping into politics. And I think as a teacher who has curriculum, who is seeing the political school committees overreaching in that end, taking a stance on this, I understand, I totally agree with the piece that we are for the kids and these sort of things, but I am concerned that if we take a stand on this, we're going to have people coming to the meeting asking us to look into what our kids are being taught. And the things we're seeing on TV and other places coming here, and I, as someone who is in a classroom and at times am asked to verify and validate what I'm being taught, what I'm teaching, even though I'm the expert, I am concerned about the precedent that voting on this as a committee will take, regardless of my personal view on this question. I think it's really important that we, as a committee, remain apolitical. Town, municipal, boards of select, select boards, you know, all of those, we are supposed to be apolitical, and I think that we need to maintain that, regardless of... We all obviously have different views, right, of certain things, but I guess I would ask, do we know years ago, it must have been eight or nine years ago, question two was about expanding charter school? Does anyone remember?
Twenty-six, right?
So did MASC have a resolution supporting or against that?
And this is not MASC.
This is not?
So this was...
Okay, so that was my question.
So this was brought forth.
Okay.
This was brought forth by a citizen as well as a school committee member to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
So my point was, as the chairperson, I did not, and I think I validated my position, I do not feel comfortable just squashing it and not putting it on the agenda.
Sure.
So I figured, my point is, I am not talking about it because I don't think it belongs here.
Yeah, so if it's not, I was under the impression that it was MASC, and that it wasn't, and so when you did, I was like, "I'm missing something." So then even more so, I just think that we need to kind of stay away from it, even though I, you know, I just told you how I feel about it personally. I just am concerned about the precedent that it'll take, and we are in a world of rabbit holes where school committees are becoming more and more political, and they're getting into businesses they shouldn't be getting into, and I don't think we should do that.
First off, you know, thank you, everyone, for your feedback. You know, I see where everyone's coming from for the need to stay apolitical going into this. You know, I sat down and really thought to myself, what is the role of a school committee member and their role in advocacy towards something like this? And the viewpoint that I took is I didn't really look at it as, now, obviously, these, you know, political parties have certain, you know, sponsorships to their agenda, and that in itself may be political. But the viewpoint I took personally was viewed as legislation. Back in 2020, when, my first time on the school committee, we reorganized, I believe it was me, Mike Jones, and maybe it was you, Fred, I'm not sure, who was appointed as a legislative rep. And the goal of the legislative rep at that point in time was for us to be up to date on things that are going on in the State House that may impact us financially or the way we do things as a district. So I do believe this question one proposed amendment, if it were to pass, it would impact our district. How would it impact our district? That's not really my place to say. I'm not sure. So I guess what I'm getting at is I did further research, and Hillary brought up a great point about Justin Evans' article and how the projection from the Department of Revenue calculation says that it impacts five or less people per the town of Whitman and the town of Hanson. But then I looked up what other school committee members or school committees are doing in other towns, and have they supported this or have they taken a position on this? And I don't have them all at the top of my head. I know one in particular was over in Braintree. They voted to support it. My point is, you know, other school committee members or other school committees are taking a position on it because it does pertain to education and to the district, and I understand the concerns there for maybe the perception of being political. But some other food for thought, too, is, you know, there's other means as a school committee, as a school committee that we can take for advocacy. You know, for example, us as Whitman-Hanson, we could write a resolution towards MASC. We could file an amendment today to have Beth, you know, bring it forward back in November. You know, there's other ways that we can go out there and we can advocate. I think this is one of them. And back to my point with the legislative rep, we haven't really had it the last year or two. I think what we voted was to have the superintendent act as a legislative rep and keep us up to date, but I do think this is something that's relevant. I think if a school committee member was still legislative rep, this would still be something that comes our way and would be worth talking about, whether the discussion turns into a vote or not. Again, not my choice. I will personally say I do support this. I do think we should bring it to a vote, but I, again, like I said, I understand people's concerns about being perceived as political and what that can do to the district and long-term impact. But again, like I said, I don't look at it from a political standpoint. I look at it as legislation, and legislation has been ingrained into what we've been doing as a district dating prior to my tenure here. So it's a viewpoint I want to offer.
So I think, so everyone that I... I already stated my position. Anyone else want to share anything? Otherwise, I'm gonna ask. I'd rather not go twice.
Just like to add.
No, I really, no. Sorry, everyone had their opportunity to share. Because if you add, then it's... So we had our question one debate, you know, if people decided to watch us instead of the gubernatorial debate for...
That was over two hours ago.
That's fine. But I do want... So you sat here the whole time, so can I, just a quick minute, like, share? Please feel free to share.
Well, I got one. I'm Brendan Griffin, by the way, 176 Temple Street in Whitman. I came in with just the, you know, my little handwritten thing here, and I heard some phony responses. That was case law about asset growth. That had nothing to do with taxes. Anywho, I'm asking the board to endorse in the affirmative via a roll call vote, the fair share amendment, which is ballot question one. School committees and city councils across the state have already initiated this action, most recently, of course, is the Braintree School Committee, to my knowledge. It's not only in the best interest of students and educators to have the act codified into the state constitution, and while discussion on the ballot initiative has been contentious, most of those arguments are tired political posturing. Whether the perception is something that you don't want to be seen as, that's on you. But I'm with you. The arguments are being pigeonholed as political. This is an economic issue. It's nothing to do with politics.
What about the $3 million and the return?
So just if, again...
Move to the vote, please.
Yeah, move to the vote.
If you could just please wrap up. He sat here.
Let me defend myself. Let me defend myself. I said, "There is a motion on the floor. I'm happy to wait." Fred had a motion.
Yep.
As much as I want to rebut, but that's not how it works.
Correct.
Mr. Robert had a plan, and...
He did.
He's, you know...
So thank you for coming.
I'm planning to let him work.
I think, thank you for coming and for your ask, and we now have, I think we've had our discussion on this, and I think we've been moved to vote. I really don't want to go round two with everyone, because once we go round two with one, we're going to go round two then. So this would be, the motion is to pass over voting on state ballot question one. Everyone's clear? All right, all those in favor of passing over? All those against? And anyone abstaining? No, so what do we... So it did carry?
Six.
Six.
Three.
Six, three. Okay, so the motion would be passed over. Okay. And we still had our debate anyways, so, okay. Moving on.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, of course. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Next. Okay, so open seat on the building committee. So Chris had reached out with some concerns about being able to attend meetings and whether or not he'd be able to, and I think maybe having a conversation if there was anyone else that wanted to do it in terms of being just another school committee representative on the building committee. Did I get it right?
Yeah.
Or take it from there?
Yeah, so I just was having difficulty making the early meetings. And, you know, recently, I was trying to make arrangements to phone in, sent an email asking, you know, to have arrangements made, never heard back, which I think is problematic and concerning. And, you know, when we were at a public forum at the middle school, a couple of parents were, actually more than a couple of parents, and I think were voicing concern about the early meetings, and I shared their concern publicly and said I'd like to see them be moved to accommodate those who want to attend, because I think that's really what we're here for and why we're here, is to do what we can to accommodate and represent the citizens of both towns. So, yeah, and I know Dawn had attended some meetings, and I thought, you know, she might be a good candidate. Obviously, wanted to go to the committee and have a vote if necessary. That was my intention. But knowing now that the chair discussed it, the meeting I wasn't able to attend with the rest of the subcommittee, the building committee, and it was determined that they're not going to accommodate me or anyone else for a later meeting. So, you know, I know in my discussions with Dawn particularly, that that's still something that she couldn't do, and I will continue to have problems, you know, attending. I'll be calling in and, you know, for the meetings, but I'll be attending when I can. But it's just, to me, it speaks to a larger kind of concern that I have about accommodating parents, particularly, and those of us who can't get out of work to come to meetings. So that's why I thought it was important to, you know, keep it on the agenda and discuss it. So as of now, I will continue to serve, but, you know, it's not a really great scenario.
So what time are the meetings?
4:30.
And has been discussion about changing the times or...
At a forum, the parents, a few of the parents had indicated that they wish that the meetings were later. So to accommodate them, we're going to make sure that the forums, so they will be as up to date as possible, will be later in the evening. But the business that the building committee needs to put forward, we had done, we started off at the same timeframe. It took a little bit when we first formed, you know, to even get to that date and time, the Tuesdays at 4:30. And it's what people can attend. You know, you have other people that have meetings later on a Tuesday evening. You have meetings that go on the rest of the week unless you want to try Friday, which nobody wants to do, so...
Pizza beer, pizza beer and building committee. So hold on. Dawn, did you have something, and then I'll come back.
Yeah, I'll just follow up. Thanks, Chris. Because, yeah, I've attended meetings in the past, and I've certainly made accommodations at my job, and I want nothing more than this project to be a success. So I'll do anything I can, but I can't... So I don't know why I'm getting emotional, but I can't sacrifice, you know, family, my job. But I think I'm emotional because, God, it's late. The families, like the parents, you know, they're working too, and you talk about a Tuesday night meeting that members need to be there at 4:30 because they have another meeting on Tuesday night. I would ask, there are not, and we'll say, there are not Whitman Board of Selectment meetings every Tuesday night, and there are not Whitman Middle School Building Committee meetings every Tuesday night either. So is a solution that they alternate, right? If those members who need to be at another later meeting, maybe the building committee meeting meets at 6:00 on the alternate Tuesday, right? You know, because it seems like they've been piggybacking, and then there are no meetings the next weekend. So I'm just, you know, speaking here in discussion as an option, I would have gladly, you know, taken on that spot, but I think when you and I talked, I said, "I have the same reservations because I can move my schedule. I can come to a meeting," but to make that, that's commitment. So, and I wouldn't want that change of time to happen and then you not be in that spot, and now I am, and then I'm going at 5:30, so, yeah.
Chris and then Dr. Frum.
Yeah, so we talk a lot about public forum, public participation, and do we want to have a citizen in large, like for a rack? Usually, what you hear is, "Well, public meetings, anybody can attend," right? So if that's our philosophy, that the Whitman Building Committee is a public meeting and anyone could attend, we ought to make it so that they can attend. That's my opinion.
And I'll, you know, equate this a little bit, and I'll say that it's not only the Board of Selectmen, it's not only the FinCon members, it's people that work for the district. It's a multitude of people. Myself, I'm fine with that. I have that time personally, but it's the conglomeration of everybody else.
So just one more requirement. So right now, it meets at 4:30, and how often does it meet?
Once a month right now?
If that, like...
We're once a month. So once we get through, maybe next March, it may be every third week or something like that. I don't anticipate it being, you know, far more often than that.
I think, you know, what people are forgetting, too, is people who... I think, you know, what people are forgetting, too, is people who work for this district are also on the committee. And you're asking them to stay beyond their hours by a long time. So, and this was determined at the beginning of the, when we had this. Now, I have a lot of considerations, like I should be home right now, I shouldn't be here because I have special issues. But, you know, it took a lot of time, we have a big group and people with all different jobs. So it took a long time for everybody to come to a decision when we were going to have this, you know? And we had to look at, as Jeff has said, the people who work for the district who are also come to the meetings and, you know, have to stay longer than their day to be here, so it's easier for some of them to be and stay till 4:30. And I understand that, but I also have been on a lot of committees in my time, and it's, you know, and I understand what you're saying, Dawn, about parents wanting to come, but if we change the time, I can bet you that we won't get more than five parents at the, and I'm not saying that that's a, but, I mean, I'm being real here, and whether people like it or not, and, you know, the parent forums, it's going to be a forum where people are going to give their opinion. We have, we're going to have, we have QR codes, they're going to be discussing this, and it's not going to be, this is what you have, and this is what it is, we're looking for opinions, we're looking for the discussion at these forums. There's going to be two before the end of the year, there's going to be one in November and one in December. So it's not like we're cutting anybody out, and I don't want people to think that. I mean, we're trying to be inclusive, and we're having it later, and we're having it at a different place, but, you know, I, this is just, it was, it's a hard thing to do, it's a hard commitment to make, and it's a hard thing to do.
Maybe, maybe.
We've also, I mean, we've put into place, you know, while it's not really a subcommittee, but we know we've got parent-teacher conferences coming, we'll have people AI3 and Colliers for parent-teachers conferences, for the schools' open houses, senior centers, sending out through the schools for,
Yeah.
what you might, coffees, you know, so we can really get as much of the community all involved at different times and different places, because they're important without the community.
We're going to lose.
So, so a couple of things, so one, maybe, and it sounds like you've already discussed it, but maybe
We have.
within your prerogative and group, you can have the conversation of, like, is there anything we can do to compromise, right? Is it maybe like one later, one, can we set, can you set the schedule? At least ask, you know, worst that happens is you get a no, but we're obviously talking about it. Is that possible, maybe to just consider, not demand, but ask the question, like, hey, could we map some of this out, maybe have?
I'll do another informal poll, but.
Right, or maybe have the conversation post-school committee, right? And then the second thing is then, back to you, Chris, so are you looking to kind of stay on and see how it goes? Or you want to open it up to see if someone else can, can attend at 4:30?
Chris had a problem hearing, unless it was one of us talking.
Chris does have a problem.
Well, so do I. I mean, no, he had a problem hearing us, which we could understand, so we had to move the podium up here. Now we've asked for Gideon to give us an extension to put the phone here.
Yeah, already handled.
And it's, we've already done that, so Chris can actually.
And also made arrangements for him to get any handouts from that day, so he'll have them as well.
Right, I mean, is it, but, right, so, I guess, again, if you can have the conversation, see what happens. I mean, I know having these meetings, and we had a couple of folks share perspectives today.
We had a couple.
So maybe you have the conversation, you want to open it up to see, I don't know if, does anyone else on the Whitman side that could regularly attend those meetings at an earlier time?
Yeah, quite honestly, we can, you know, and I don't want discouraged involvement or anything, but we have such a large committee, and we already meet the goals of MSBA. You know, we wouldn't have to, you know.
So thoughtful of you, Fred.
Yeah, well, I think there's two sides. I think there's the requirement, and then I think, again, it's doing what we try to create, to create participation, right? So if we have folks that want to participate, especially school committee members that like yourselves, are dedicating a lot of time, and they're running into work commitments, if there's any type of consideration to compromise at least some of the time, would be wonderful.
Like, we had a work group that was occurring, the Educational Work Group.
Right.
And Beth attended the meetings because she was able to.
Oh, I'm in the, we're in the working group, the smaller working group.
Well, we had a vote on our committee, and I wanted to go more than you can imagine. You know me, I like to get my hand into everything, and it just time-wise, I couldn't meet in the mornings. I just couldn't make that commitment.
We meet in the small working group, meets at 9:00.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the path is.
No, the path is, I'm still in the committee and I'll continue to serve, and I appreciate the accommodations, and we'll move forward. That's the path, but, you know, philosophically, I think we've got an issue here, and I think that comparing whatever group you were just referring to, to a Whitman Middle School Building Committee that's going to potentially be a structure that, you know, houses our students for decades, is a little different.
Well, you know, and another thing, Chris, maybe we can, because there are a couple meetings already scheduled, but final decisions aren't made, and, you know, maybe when we get close to that, we can switch around some dates.
Yeah, anything would be appreciated.
I think the fact that we have the conversation here, if you can at least try to do that, I think that would be.
I mean, personally, I'd rather meet a little bit later. Personally, it's kind of unique, I get to eat, you know, I like to eat.
Okay, it sounds like, maybe, maybe we could make some progress there, okay. And it is getting really late, so let's keep us moving.
Motion to approve the.
Field trip.
Well, I know it's the quintet, yeah, that one.
Thank you. Yeah, can we just vote?
Yes, Deka, thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All of them, please.
There we go.
All right, sweet. And then we're on subcommittee reports, if we can try and keep them all brief.
Jeff, do you want me to talk about the scope first?
We read it, we all read it.
So has anyone not read the scope? This might be.
Any questions between what's highlighted, red, yellow, nothing, everything?
Can we get a motion for the scope document?
Motion to approve the scope.
Document, great.
For a bunch of stuff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right.
All right.
All of them, all of them in favor? You had it, you guys.
Good work.
Well, we have it ahead of time, you can read it.
So it was either your wonderful articulation or the fact that we got to it at 9:27. Well, I don't know which one.
Looking for a raise. Just one thing, and I did reach out to Desi around Hold Harmless, and I scheduled Rob O'Donnell to be here on November 17.
In person?
In person.
Wow.
For a workshop.
What time?
It'll be Thursday, November 17.
At?
At 6:30.
Did you start promoting?
Yeah, yeah, so I just want.
Trying to run out here.
So, so Rob will be here to do a workshop on Hold Harmless for the community. Could you give us the date again, please? Yeah, November 17.
At 6:30.
He's hearing.
And you'll push something out?
I will push something, I just want to let you guys know.
An appointment for November 17, 6:30 PM.
I think maybe just some Rob O'Donnell collaborative town partners.
Oh, yeah.
Right, like, I think if we send something to the town administrators and say, hey, can you share this report? With what the Select Committee members.
This is NPLI, the scope document, I'm going to email out to the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, and Finance Committees.
This, the 17th is a workshop.
Yeah.
Okay, it's not a, it's not a discussion, it's not a posted meeting, there's no agenda, no agenda. Rob O'Donnell giving a presentation on Hold Harmless.
No, but I'm standing with your chair in a second.
Chris, I believe.
Yeah, operations and capital, oh, sorry, you have, I have a couple of leases.
So I spoke to Mr. Lyneum today, there was a question on the lease. He was supposed to get me that documentation today that I would share with you, it didn't come through, but there was some question on the lease parcel of the new middle school. I'd rather go to the next meeting with more information, I don't want to misspeak from my conversation with Frank.
They do have the deed.
Yes.
So.
But, but nobody here knows what that is.
I thought he sent it to Bates.
He might, but this committee doesn't.
Okay.
So, again, there was an issue at a building, at the building committee meeting over the parcels of land, the deeds to the land. Frank and I spoke today, he was supposed to send me a nice graphic picture with the deeds, it didn't happen. We spoke today at 1:00, I'd rather just not go into it today and miscommunicate anything to this committee. We'll do it in November. That's all I got.
Okay, operations.
Yes, please.
So, thank you for approving the tech, and Gideon gave great explanations, two things. Speed bumps are coming back to the driveway and very soon. I think they were supposed to be here, and they're coming, though. And then the card access updating the doors and locks, the equipment is coming like next week, so that will all be corrected and updated.
And the speed bumps don't have to have the same, like, launch angle as the last one? If you hit it, good.
I don't know, I don't have to, I think you might need to.
Take, take your wheel.
Negotiations, do we have anything?
I, we are still negotiating VCD.
Policy, anything, next week?
We have a matroom meeting next week.
Great, and Pilgrim Area Collaborative.
Yes, we had our first meeting last Thursday, we reorganized, we had our trustees meeting. There is the auditor's report that was presented, we showed To Be Fair, which is a good report. Chris, if they do what they did last year, they'll send you a copy.
Okay, I'll share it if I get it.
Yeah, otherwise, it's going to be on the Pilgrim Area Collaborative website. And we had to readjust the budget for this year after our audit report, and knowing that we had additional monies, we're turning 25% of those monies back to the member towns. Whitman's getting a little over $2,000.
Great, Craig, have a little bit of. All right, I think that concludes our.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All of them in favor?
Good night.
Great, thank you, everyone.